Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Yeah, I think we lost our audio.
Okay.
I'll text her.
You want me to move on to the?
Yeah, so I'll go back on.
Okay. Meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
I just got unmuted. I just heard something say I'm unmuted.
Okay. If I mean. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
And City Manager Donna Viero is attending, City Attorney Frederick Rofetto is attending, and additional staff members attending the meeting are Michael Manzella, Deputy City Manager and Director of Transportation, Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Zoning. We also have Beth McManus of Kyla McManus Associates, the city's affordable housing planner. We will now have a silent prayer moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Resolution to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which it stands. And one nation, under God.
Indivisible, indivisible.
Liberty, justice, for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to matters from the city council. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, so I'd like to thank everybody for joining in, and I also want to make sure that I acknowledge our Asbury Park Fire Department and Police Department for keeping us safe and healthy during these challenging times. And also our city staff, our DPW, our Social Services, especially in these times, our IT, and all of our city staff who have been coming to work to keep our city running. You know, it's been really trying times, and everybody's really chipped in to keep everything running the best we can. I'd also like to acknowledge our healthcare professionals out there, employees of essential businesses who risk their health every time they go to work, all of the volunteers that have been volunteering in all these organizations in and around the Asbury Park area. And I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge our city manager, who's been the ringleader in pulling this all together. So I hope everyone's safe and healthy out there, and thank you for joining us.
Councilmember Clayton.
Can I say one more thing? One more thing quickly?
Sure.
I just want to remind people that our city commissions and committees will start meeting virtually, so keep an eye out on our website if anyone would like to join in in these meetings. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
Hi, Eileen has really covered everybody, and I just want to echo what she has done and said. It means so much to us for the support that we've received from everybody in the city, residents, employees of the city, and the way that the city has come together to support everyone. Continue to support our restaurant. Do what you can for AP Dinner Table because that helps to feed us. And anything that you might need from the city, please don't hesitate to reach out to us because that's why we're here, and we want to do whatever we can to continue to make this as painless as possible, and we know what a difficult time this is for everyone. Thank you. Thank you for being on this call, and continue to support us.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for just trusting in the council and believing in us, and I would say God bless you, and try to stay safe, and just encourage others to stick to the rules, and we're all going to come out of this okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Ditto to everything everybody else said. That's it.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, just again, thank everybody. I echo sentiments and a couple of house cleaning items. The resolution item as far as closing the beaches, that's an annual resolution. It has nothing to do with the COVID crisis. It's something we do every year to, like, we have to close the beaches to open the beaches. So I don't want anybody to, if they read the agenda that we're closing the beaches, it has nothing to do with the COVID whatsoever. I would like to remind everybody, we cannot enforce this, but I would like to ask everybody if they're out in public, please wear a mask. And as far as restaurants, they're for takeout. They're not for outdoor feeding, be it on the steps, be it on the stoops, anything else. And please obey by this because we don't want the police to enforce that. As far as the agenda item 2020-145, what went out to the council and the public was, it was a place saver. Since that time it went out, it's been modified. This is not an 80-foot tower. There are a couple of small chimneys on top of the sewer plant that will give us better communication on all parts of the town. It's part of public safety, and truthfully, we're getting another $50, $100 a month, and right now the city needs every dollar they can get, so hopefully that will be passed tonight. And today marks the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. There goes my wife's phone. So it's the international celebration to launch the moderate environmental movement and the 50th birthday of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, put in by Governor Cahill. Thank you.
Okay, we are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Please remember to identify yourself.
Motion to open, Councilmember Kendall.
Second, Eileen Chapman. All in favor? None opposed?
All right.
Okay. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will either call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to participate. When called upon, you will be unmuted to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes, and when you reach the one-minute mark, I will announce it. Motion to open the meeting to the public. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I have 3350 I'm calling upon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest Menolli, corner of Dill Lake Drive, apartment 5B, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'd like to say I'm listening very intently to everyone speak, and I appreciate everything positive that's being done for the city. I tend to also be a.
Box not moving.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. And I appreciate everything that's being done positive. And of course, you know, I'm getting rather well-known for being a critic both of positive things and negative things. So I would like to give credit, I think, more to the people in Asbury that I live with and see, 15,000 of us, who seem to be struggling and doing the best we can. And I know first responders in the council and the mayor and police and fire, I guess you like to think that, you know, it's because of y'all only that we're safe and secure. But from my experience and what I'm seeing and being in the city during this pandemic, I think the onus and the credit is more on us. And a lot of us don't feel that we have the ability to reach out for help or get help or we see things that we know are wrong or COVID violations. You make it sound like we easily call in and call the police when in fact, no one I know is having that experience. We can't reach fire, we can't reach police, we can't seem to reach the council, the mayor. Everything seems to be sort of handled for us in a way that a lot of times has nothing to do with what we need. And I just find that problematic. Now, I'm sure it's for another time after the pandemic. I know we have to stay together and work through this, and I'm willing to do that, but I'm not willing to forget what I saw in January, February, and March when the world knew what was going on in the pandemic, and Asbury Park Mayor and Council and committees decided to go ahead and have what would be construed now as clearly wrong choices of dangerous gatherings, the Recreation Committee, Asbury Hotel Meeting, the Black History Month at the Berkeley, St. Patrick's Day Parade, the packing of the bars.
You have one minute left.
The packing of the bars and the clubs, inviting the people from all over New Jersey and New York, the constant flow of New Yorkers in here, not following the rules, quarantining, police, not even, look, who needs police more than just get on the speaker and be outside of 7-Eleven? And if somebody's going in without a mask, you don't have to get out and give them a summons? Just say, "Sir," or "Ma'am, please, a mask going in." Well, you don't see any of that anywhere. No one's being directed. And I think the job of the police, the mayor, council, and the fire department is to protect us from ourselves, not that it's adversarial. And I think the rest of the stuff I'd like to take up when this is over, and God bless everybody who's going through this.
Are you done?
Mr. Menolli, are you finished?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I thank you and wish you good health. I disagree with you on a couple of things, and you cannot respond, so hopefully you've been cut off, just for everyone else to know. John Moore, home phone number 732-988-7915, cell phone number 908-489-1887, email john.moor, no E, at cityofasburypark.com, city phone, they can get touch many, 732-502-5753 or 5755. So I think this council's been more than receptive for the past five years that anything and anybody, if you don't want to call, that's your prerogative. Thank you. Next.
I am now calling on 48460. Please state your name and address for the record.
Maureen Duffy, I'm sorry, Maureen Devon Duffy, Dill Lake Drive. In talking about the virus, I would like to know what the city's fallback plan is should protests here, like we've seen elsewhere in other parts of the country, of people who have decided to take the liberty on themselves to decide when they should congregate again, if that should occur here, what is the plan? I think that certainly the council has expressed a lot of concern about the welfare of the citizens during this virus plague. But I think that more could be done as far as talking, communicating some way. I did offer you, John, to come on to my podcast, and people would be able to go onto Facebook and actually see you talking and ask questions, post questions on Facebook. I think I still want to propose that you do that because I think it's important for the leadership, for the mayor, to be a strong symbol and to be more transparent about the plans that are going to affect everyone. It's certainly going to be very hard once people start pouring into this town to keep them from congregating at unsafe distances, and certainly it's going to be a temptation to everyone here. And that's all I have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. As far as like demonstration or anything like that, we are under the governor's executive order and will enforce that executive order, so if anybody's going to do anything like that, they will pay the price. As far as, right, you did invite me, and I said, I think we're like in the middle of something that is changing. It's very fluid. It's hour by hour, day by day, and it's changing. So I don't want to go on Facebook next door or anything with saying, "What do I think?" When we don't know because we're not getting great guidance from be it federal, state, county, and even local level. Everybody's basically winging it. And truthfully, and I'm just going to say this, this is my opinion, I've gotten many calls, and the entire council has, from neighboring towns, neighboring council people, neighboring mayors, that Asbury Park has been the most upfront and out-front city in Monmouth County as far as putting information out, be it, thank you, Sonia, thank our communications director, thank Nixal, thank everybody, thank Amy. I get the messages from the county. I relate to Amy. Amy is much smarter than me, as far, and Eileen, as far as computers. And we're putting out much more information than any other town. So as far as like not being transparent, totally disagree with it, but appreciate it. And once this is over, like I told you when you invited me on, once this is over, I'll be the first person on your podcast. Thank you. Next.
We are on to 6149. Please state your name and address for the record.
Myra Campbell, Madison Avenue. My statement is, who really represents us? The well-to-do will be far less affected than the essential workers who jeopardize their lives to put food on their family's tables and continue to serve us. The grocery workers, the maintenance people, nursing home attendants and residents, the workers in the fields, the elderly, Black and Latino citizens, all of whom are dying at alarming rates. I would be negligent if I didn't respect and pay tribute to the frontline defenders, the doctors, the nurses, fire persons, police, and EMT workers. As a resident of Asbury Park, I'm looking for leadership and help from our government. It's imperative that our residents receive education and PPE to reduce the impact COVID is having on our community. I'm looking for transparency as steps you've taken, our government, to serve the community that elected you. Informing the community via a variety of media outlets and communication is needed. APTV, PPE, supplies needed, timeframes, Facebook, Nextdoor flyers, bullhorn announcements, et cetera. Specific steps the city has taken and the steps citizens must take to minimize this virus is needed and must be communicated. Our tax dollars must be used to address the pandemic needs in the minority communities that populate Asbury Park. If the city gets financial gains because of its low-income status, why aren't those dollars being spent in the most effective areas that allow the city to get those dollars? Some statistics. Nationwide, Wisconsin, population of African-Americans, 6%. Black deaths, 40%. Louisiana, population 32%.
You have one minute left, Myra.
Okay. I could go on with more statistics. Former Mayor Ed Johnson showed his strong leadership character when Hurricane Sandy struck the Jersey Shore. He stood up showing leadership abilities to put a plan in place to serve the entire community. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. What can we expect from you, Mayor Moore? Sincerely, and it does deserve me, if the city spends $50,000 to make sure that employees that work for the city, many of who do not live in the city, are in a safe environment, what about the safety of the residents in the overall general population of Asbury Park? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Myra, and I'm wishing you good health. As far as transparency, I think that goes back to the question answered with Maureen and other people, so I'm not going to keep on repeating it. I think again, well, I guess I will repeat it. I think Asbury Park's been the most upfront city as far as in the county, as far as putting information out, be it on Nixal, be it on our website. We tried to get that out to everybody. We've been in contact with the churches. We've been in contact with the school system, handing out literature as far as when people pick up lunches and everything, dinner, to get the information out. Any other suggestions are deeply appreciated. As far as any money we received, we have not received one cent, not one cent, not one cent, not one cent, because this lousy bill passed really screwed New Jersey. We have no cities of over 500,000, so no money's gone to any city yet. The money's being furnished to the state and the county, and to this date, we have not gotten one penny. Once we get it, absolutely, this is not east side, west side, north, south. This is the entire city. Everything we're doing is for all 16,000 residents. Again, I appreciate everything, and I've told everybody from day one, if anybody has any suggestions how we can do this better, we're open for these suggestions. This is not a sand. This is not a blizzard. This is not something that anybody's dealt with before. Are we winging it? Hell, yeah. Is the federal government winging it? Hell, yeah. Is Trenton winging it? Hell, yeah. Is the county winging it? Hell, yeah. I mean, so we're winging it, and I think we're getting most of it right, but if we're missing something, I'd rather get constructive criticism and ideas than being raked over the coals. Thank you. Next.
We are on to 1901. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, council, this is Joe Grillo at 521 Cookman Avenue. I just wanted to thank the council, the mayor and council, and all the municipal workers that are out there, and want to give an update on Asbury Park Dinner Table. With the help of hundreds of private donations, corporate donations, in a month and four days, which seems almost like a decade, Asbury Park Dinner Table has served almost 15,000 dinner meals from local restaurants to residents, anyone that is experiencing food insecurity. And we're aware of helping restaurants retain at least 30 jobs within the restaurant community. I know it seems like a small amount, but it means a lot to us. For anyone that doesn't know about Asbury Park Dinner Table, we are a 501(c)(3) that is partnered with three local churches, the Boys and Girls Club, and numerous restaurants in Asbury Park to provide, to support local restaurants by purchasing meals from them and providing dinners for the families of Asbury Park. The meals are free, no questions asked, no qualifiers, no one will be turned away. Meals are served on a first-come, first-served basis between the hours of 5:30 and 6:30 every day at the following locations. Second Baptist Church at 124 Atkins Avenue, St. Stevens AME Church at 1001 Springwood Avenue, United Fellowship Baptist Church at 603 Third Avenue, and Boys and Girls Club at 1201 Monroe Avenue. They actually start, Boys and Girls Club starts at 5 distributing the meals. And we also have the Asbury Park Food Collective, which is at 906 Sewell Avenue. So I just wanted to thank everybody in our community and the volunteers that have helped distribute the meals and the city for its support. Thanks again.
You have one minute left.
I'm done.
Thank you, Joe, and I thank you, Kathy, everybody, and I thank all the, and there's been so many volunteers that have stepped up to the plate. You guys are doing a great job, and other people have given so much to us and everything, so it's deeply appreciative, and down the road, we'll be recognizing everybody. Again, thank you very much.
Hey, I'm now calling on Kathleen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kathleen. I'm from the Asbury Park Library. I live in Brick, New Jersey.
Kathleen, please state, please state your last name, Kathleen, for the record.
Melgar. It's M-E-L-G-A-R.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make just a quick announcement. The library is open to offer virtual support, Monday through Thursday, 9 to 5. And we're also offering virtual cards to residents and people who work in town. So we're trying to get people signed up. They could just call over the phone or email the APL-info@asburyparklibrary.org. And on Thursdays, we're posting storytimes too on social media, on our Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube channel. So, and also, we're open to any suggestions and any comments, like if people have recommendations for books that they want us to read, or if they have any ideas for any programming that they'd like during this time. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Kathleen, and a great job by the library. I know we've been sharing that, maybe we should share it more, and we'll put it up. Again, thank you for all you're doing, and a great job.
I am now calling on Amy O'Rourke. Please state your name and address for the record. Amy?
She is unmuted. Perhaps she's not there anymore.
Wait, no, I'm here, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Amy O'Rourke, Webb Street, Asbury Park, 1703. I had you on mute, I'm sorry. I'm calling about the rezoning that I got in the mail, and I just have some questions. I've been there for 10 years. We bought our condo in 2010. We've gone through a lot of changes in that area, most of them for the better. But I live in a highly congested part of Asbury Park. I live directly across from the Miramar, which has no parking. And there is a high-rise right around the block that's got no parking. We, you know, we've, a sea change with the permit parking, but there's still an impossible parking situation going on. Now, what I understand is, and I'd like this answered, is there a developer coming in here where you're going to waive zoning restrictions, height, whatever they may be, to increase the density in this area? Because I don't care who I live next to, but I am very concerned with the density in this part of Asbury Park. I very often have to walk six or seven blocks in the summer to get back to my home because I can't find a parking spot. It's a problem. And from what I understand from what was sent to me, 20% of the lower and middle income, I have no problem living next to lower-middle-income individuals, absolutely no problem with that. However, there's no parking assigned for them. So where do we park? And when does the quality of life that I bought into 10 years ago become something feasible for me? I, it doesn't get better for me. It gets worse for me and for my family, and I don't appreciate that. And I think you've got a great government, and Asbury is a wonderful city, but this is an issue here. High-density northeast.
Amy, Amy, you have one minute left.
Okay, that's my concern, and that's what I thought this meeting was pretty much going to be about. I get all the wonderful things you do, and Asbury is a wonderful place, or we never would have even have bought there, but this is making it untenable to live there. To the people that pay taxes, to the people that have been there from day one, and now high-density, more high-density housing, I want to know if there's a builder. I want to know who it is. I want to know what zoning restrictions are going to be let go, and I want to know how that impacts me on Webb Street, across the street from the Miramar, where I can't park already. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, Amy, thank you, and let me just tell everybody right now, no, there is no developers, there's no secret deals, there's no anything. Again, that would be totally against everything this council's about. This is a, many ordinances that you can ask questions about later as far as the specific ordinance, as far as like Dill Lake Drive and everything, but there isn't, there's nothing lurking in the background. This is to do the best to get affordable housing into the city citywide. And as far as, if anybody else wants to answer, I mean, the Miramar, you're in the waterfront region developing zone, so. So I'm not even sure exactly how it is. There's no secret deal going on. If somebody else, Donna or somebody wants their, Beth wants to reply or reply, or if that's a question that should be asked at the, when we get to that ordinance, I'll, I'll put it off to then.
Well, I, I, this is Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. Um, everyone within the R3 zone and 200 feet beyond the R3 zone got a notice. So there's no changes to the waterfront redevelopment plan area. The only, uh, changes are in the R3 and other zones that permit apartment buildings. So there's no change in density. It's just that there will be a 20% affordable housing requirement for any new construction that creates five or more units. The speaker, if she's not in the R3 zone, she got a notice because she was within 200 feet of the R3 zone.
Thank you, Michelle. And Amy, hopefully that answers your question. If not, you can bring it up again when we get to the ordinance.
We are now on 9742. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sylvia. Sylvia, Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'd like to first, um, thank you all for everything that you've been doing to keep everyone, um, safe and healthy, and particularly the, uh, police and EMT, um, DPW, and, um, the fire department. responsiveness has been unbelievable. Um, I'd like to just make a couple of, of comments, please. Um, one, um, is, uh, where am I here? Uh, the, to remind the businesses that they can update, uh, any of their information on the Chamber, uh, website. We've created a landing page. Uh, it doesn't matter if you're a member of the Chamber or not. As we said in the beginning of this, everybody should consider themselves a member of the Chamber and, and avail themselves of any resource that we have. Um, and I want to make sure that people are able or reminding themselves to, to do that as well so that we can keep current with, with whatever their models are. Um, also, um, if you are a business that is not, uh, currently getting emails from me, please text me your, um, email address at 732-720-9742 so that I can keep you updated on, um, any information that I get. Um, we've been working with, um, other business organizations like the state and national chambers to support, um, uh, measures that would provide, or hopefully provide some relief. Um, and next time, maybe to the businesses like ours in Asbury Park, the actual small businesses that are being struck so, so, um, impacted so, so, um, uh, badly. Um, and also, as we look forward, we want to make sure that we have a, a good plan for recovery with our county.
There's one minute left.
Thank you. Um, so if you're not on my email list, please make sure that you get on to our email list so that I can keep you updated and also get information. Um, you might have ideas that would be great for me to pass on. Um, lastly, I would like to, um, just acknowledge Joe Grillo from, um, one of the, he was one of the earlier speakers. What a great job you guys are doing. Just heartwarming. And I think that is it for me. Thank you. Thank you. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you, Sylvia. I wish you and your family the best of luck with this crisis and be safe.
We are now on two, 0033. Please state your name and address for the record.
Arthur Schlossback, uh, 1043 Summerfield Avenue, Asbury Park. Uh, first, I'd like to bring up that, one, uh, the PMC Center off the Parkway started today allowing anybody to come in for any reason to get a test. I went up, it took about 20 minutes. Was very easy, was very fast, and it doesn't cost anything. Number two, um, I think I have a barometer on the residents of this town, and I don't think we're going to have any demonstrations by residents or business people to open up the town. I think we're smarter, smarter than the normal people in this country. Um, number three, uh, my friends in New York started about four weeks ago after seeing the people in Milan, Italy singing opera outside their windows at seven o'clock at night and started doing a clap your hands or bang your, 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 um, your pots to support the hospital workers and the first, first responders. And I tried to start it here. I, we're starting to build up a little, a little more on the east side to the west side. Thing is, at seven o'clock, you bang some back. And when you hear somebody else banging back, it really makes you feel good. And also, one of my neighbors is a nurse. He gave me a cake. Um, number three, at 8:00 PM on, uh, so at 7:00 PM every day, get out on your porch and clap your hands for two minutes. It doesn't cost much. And at 8:00 PM on Wednesdays and Sundays at Monroe Towers, they have a light show and, and, uh, some really good music. The only thing is, please bring your masks, because there's a lot of young women there that were just walking around in clusters. And, uh, that doesn't work. My friend, um, Sam Champion from New York, we were talking, and he brought up the fact that if it's windy, 16 isn't enough. You could get a gust of wind, someone coughs, and bring those, 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 um, water, the, the virus hits you from much farther away than people say. So just watch that.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. And, um, the, the other thing that people are probably not going to like, especially the person from, that was talking about the parking and stuff. My father used to say that the east coast has 6,000 people, the west coast, I mean, the east coast has 6,000 miles and the west coast has 8,000 miles and 300,000 people before, between, and 300 million people in between. And they all want to come to the beach. And that's just what you get when you live in a, in a, in a, in a beach town. It's just what it is. And you've just got to live with it. I mean, my family's been here since the 1800s, like, like the, the mayors. And you just deal with it. Um, that's it. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Art.
Yeah, just wanted to make a quick correction that initially, uh, the prosecutor's office sent out an email saying that they were doing testing at PMC with, that was symptomless, if that's even a word. Um, and, and the governor today during the press conference really rolled back on that. So just want to, just want to mention that.
Thank you, Amy. And Art, thank you. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Sonia Bryant and you as far as the bagging the pants, clapping the hands. And, yeah, it started a couple of weeks ago, and it was like, mm, not a great response. It's picked up. Uh, and I agree with you. I think everybody, we cannot enforce it. It's not an executive order, but I think everybody should be wearing masks when they go outside. So again, Art, thank you.
I am now calling on 6942. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Carrie Butch, and I'm calling from 500 Deal Lake Drive in Asbury Park. How are you?
Good, Carrie. How are you?
I'm actually calling because I am very, very concerned about the lack of information that's coming out of City Hall and the lack of dialogue that's happening when this kind of a pandemic is changing on a daily basis. John, we won't hold you to any kind of higher standard, but we do need to talk to you. We do need to do it publicly. We do need to get the information from you. And in addition, you know, you know, I've asked you guys to partner with the city manager and key staff to hold an informative Teletown Hall, separate and independent from the council meeting. It should be happening on regular bases. I can tell you, John, that I'm working with cities like Newark and Jersey City, and they are absolutely on the internet every day, talking to their constituents. A, a city like Asbury Park has such vulnerable populations, whether it's seniors, whether it's people of color that are dying at higher, 50% higher rates, um, African Americans. We need to know what's happening in our city. We need to know where the hotspots are. We need, need to be reassured on what you're doing. I'm sure you're doing a great job, but none of us know because we're in the dark. Yes, we get press releases forwarded from the state. Yes, we watch Governor Murphy, but we don't know what's going on in our city. So I'm asking you to keep us informed on how many cases are in Asbury Park, how many hospitalizations, how many people are on ventilators, the racial makeup, the discharges, who's been recovered, what staff has been impacted and on quarantine. These are crit- critical questions. There, we need the information. Where are the hotspots?
One minute left, Carrie.
Oh, no. Okay, okay. So I'm asking the mayor to inform, educate, inspire, acknowledge, address, scold if necessary. Residents need to know that, that you're, um, that you're, our leadership is how it's dealing with it, and it is dealing with it. But we need to know how. And you're going to have to be there, Mayor, when, when, when we're eulogizing members of our community that we've already lost. Okay? So I want every single person in town to get a mask. And if they don't have one, we have to, we have to be getting them. We, we should be passing out masks just like they did condoms during the AIDS crisis. We need information. Bombard us with information. Focus on the vulnerable and partner with your trusted messengers like me. And we'll help you through this, but you have to talk to us. That's all. You're not doing the best job with communication. You may think you are. A lot of people tell you you are. Thank you. Bye now.
Carrie, thank you. Uh, we agree to disagree, and I think the city's doing an excellent job. Again, I have neighboring mayors, I have neighboring, uh, friends saying like the city's more in front of this than anybody else. If you don't think so, that's your right. Uh, as far as hotspots, racial makeup, uh, discharges, that's all information we do not get from the county. That's all information like we do not get. If we had it, we would share. It's information we cannot get because of HIPAA violations and everything else. When the county was first giving us information as far as like, uh, the daily numbers, they put a hold on it and said, guess what? We're not going to give it to you anymore. Well, guess who was the first city to call up and say, that's bullshit, Asbury Park and myself? And then I got other mayors in the county saying, look, there's power in numbers, and there's 53 cities in the county, and 28 of them, including Asbury Park, are under the, uh, county health department. So we were like, hey, look, just give it to the 28. And they were like, oh, no, 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 it's too difficult. And again, we called, we, we, we said bullshit. And because, again, I thank the other mayors, I thank Chris Luciano, I thank Ed Donovan, Matt Swann. Like, we said, no, we need this information. I don't want to know who, where, but we need the numbers. And every day, the numbers are going up. If, uh, they're going up on Facebook, again, they're going up on NICS, they're going up on everything. So I, I think we're doing a great job as far as getting out the information. As far as masks, we would love to have the money or the capability to give everybody like 10 masks. Number one, we don't have the money. And number two, we're trying to keep our first responders with masks, which is difficult at times because we're not getting them as much as we need from either the Fed, state. Are we maintaining? Yes. But we, we, we're not at the peak yet. So once we get there, we may be able to do more. But as far as information, I totally disagree with you as far as information. And again, uh, we're friends. Uh, on that subject, we, we have the right to disagree. Thank you.
I am now calling upon Michelle Gladin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, it's Michelle Gladin. I live at 206210 Second Avenue in Asbury Park. I'm going to speak very briefly on a personal level. Um, John Moore, I owe you a long overdue thank you. Uh, I disagree with Ernest McNoly and those in the community that say that our government does not respond at a very vulnerable moment, um, filled with fear, late at night. I was awoken. I won't get into the details, but scared in a place of fear and reached out to John Moore. He picked up the phone immediately and calmed me down. So I want to say to you personally, thank you, John. Um, I know we haven't spoken in a while, and I regret not calling you to thank you afterwards for that. Um, now I'm going to speak on behalf of my work at Interfaith Neighbors. I just wanted people in the community to know, who are still struggling, that our COVID-19 emergency fund is set up and working. We are awarding up to $1,000 in grant awards, no questions asked, to residents of Monmouth County for emergent needs. Um, you can go on our website. All the information is there. We have repositioned our staff to help so that the, the callback time has moved from a few days to 24 to 48 hours. So please, anybody who is feeling an emergent need or feeling choked up in fear about meeting finances, whether it's for your food, a car repair, medicine, please do reach out. We have Maura Comer, our Director of Rental and Mortgage Assistance, has aligned herself, working remotely with a team of eight, to help respond to that. I also want to give a personal thank you to those in the community, especially Asbury Park, when this first hit, that reached out and said, how can we help? How can we volunteer? And many came in to help and assist with our Meals on Wheels program. We serve over 1,100 meals a day to homebound. Thanks, Melody. We serve over 1,100 meals a day to homebound residents and seniors. And, um, most of that work, we rely on volunteers, but our volunteers were the high-risk population when this first hit. So I want to thank all of those who stepped up to help deliver those meals. And that's it for me. Um, I do, as a person who has been a journalist for over 25 years, think that you are doing an amazing job with communications. So thank you all.
Michelle, thank you. And, uh, there is no reason to call me. The way I was brought up is like friends don't have to thank friends for doing the right thing. And, uh, you did the right thing by calling me. I did the right thing by responding. And there's no reason to thank me. I mean, forget mayor, smare. I mean, that was just like, mm, that's what friends are about. Thank you, mommy and daddy, which I miss every day of my life. Uh, as, as far as Interfaith, everybody, yes, Interfaith is doing a great job. And again, another partner that we were so proud of and doing so much. And again, down the road, we will recognize all these partners. Uh, it's just like, we can't do it now because we're going to leave somebody out. Some of the partners don't want to be recognized because they'll be inundated by requests from other towns. So we're going to keep them secret and keep them to the Asbury Park residents. But, uh, Michelle, thank you and thank Interfaith.
I'm now moving on to 8009. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Vera Kowalski, uh, Deal Lake Drive. Um, I hope.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, Vera Kowalski, 510 Deal Lake Drive.
Go ahead, Vera.
Hope everybody's safe and doing well. Um, I, I apologize, and you may be, um, going to get to this, but I received a packet in the mail, and I was just inquiring about ordinance number 2020-11. And if someone could kind of explain a little bit of what that ordinance is referring to regarding Deal Lake Drive.
Is that your only question, Vera?
I, I, that's my only question. I apologize. I, reading through this, it really, I can't understand much of it. I've got to be honest.
I love the name Vera. That's my wife's name.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate, that's your wife's name?
Yes.
Very cool.
Okay. Can you like hang on? Because that's one of the ordinances that we're going to talk about later. If not, it's going to probably, unless, Michelle, if you can say it quickly, but I don't know your total concerns, but it's like an ordinance where like, there'll be plenty of time to like, there's no time limit on that. So you can ask like 20 questions as far as getting into the, like, the weeds and everything. And, but, I mean, just now, like, we have like, probably like 20 other people waiting for their three minutes. So if possible, you can hold on. And again, the letter that went out to everybody said like, if you have any, and I'm not, I'm not busting your back. It said, if you have any question, concerns, use email Michelle Alonso, cityofasburypark.com, or call her number, which I think is 5711. And, you know, we can get to that later if that's okay with you, Vera.
Absolutely. Fine with me. Thank you very much.
And thank you and be safe.
You have one minute left, Vera. Do you have anything else? No, I'll wait till that discussion. Thank you. Okay.
Again, thank you.
Are, are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard? Not seeing any other members? Motion to close the meeting to the public. Please remember to identify yourself. Irene Chapman, move to close.
Jesse can, no second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Public for participation is. Public participation is now closed. We are now on to the minutes. We have the minutes of the municipal council meeting of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Please remember to identify yourself.
Move to accept. This is Yvonne Clayton.
Okay, I have a motion by, okay, I have a motion by, um, Councilmember Clayton, a second by Deputy Mayor Quinn. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chat- Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to, uh, individual resolutions. We have Resolution twenty twenty one forty-one, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion? And I will respectfully ask to please remember to identify yourself. Amy Quinn, motion to move.
Um, I, Eileen Chapman, I need to abstain from three of those, uh, line items.
And you are correct. Um, Councilmember Chapman is abstaining from twenty dash zero zero seven one zero, twenty dash zero zero seven five two, twenty dash zero zero two seven eight.
And I will second the motion.
Okay, and I have a second from Chapman.
Okay.
Councilmember Chapman. We're on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to twenty twenty one forty-two, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, converting a storm recovery reserve fund to a coronavirus response reserve in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight, colon four dash six two dash one. Do I have a motion?
Motion to Kendall to move.
Eileen Chapman. We're on now on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-three, a resolution amending contract for public health nursing services for twenty twenty. Do I have a motion? And please remember to identify yourself.
Motion to move, Councilman Kendall.
Do I have- Yvonne Clayton.
Oh, okay.
We, we will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty one forty-four is a resolution amending Resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-seven regarding the appointment of T and M Associates as the Municipal Engineer for the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion? Eileen Chapman.
Motion to move. Second, Kendall.
Okay, I have a motion from Eileen Chapman and a second from Councilmember Kendall. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty one forty-five, authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Do I have a motion? And please remember to identify yourself.
Amy Quinn, move it.
Yvonne Clayton, second.
Yeah, I have the, I have Amy Quinn with the move, and I have Councilmember, um, Clayton with the second. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution twenty twenty one forty-six, authorizing design and bidding services and construction administration to T and M Associates for RBC replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move, Kendall, second.
Um, I have Councilmember Kendall with the second, and I didn't get who, who made the initial move. Okay, I have Councilmember Chapman with the move. Okay, we're now on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to twenty twenty one forty-seven, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, authorizing the release of escrow funds pursuant to the escrow agreement stated two thousand and eleven by and among the City of Asbury Park, Asbury Partners LLC, Anfield, Grim and Aaron PC, regarding the property located at nine oh two Kingsley Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Kendall to move.
Amy Quinn?
Kendall, second.
Okay, I have Amy Quinn with the move, and Councilmember Kendall with the second. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have twenty twenty one forty-eight, authorizing the tax collector to prepare and deliver estimated twenty twenty third quarter tax bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Yvonne Clayton. Second, Amy Quinn.
Okay, I have, um, Councilmember Clayton with the move, Amy Quinn with the second. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution twenty twenty one forty-nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a scrubber controller for the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Councilman Kendall.
Second, Eileen Chapman.
Hey, we have Councilmember Kendall with the move, and Councilmember Chapman with the second. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution twenty twenty one five zero, a resolution authorizing the purchase of ammunition for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Oh, boy.
Eileen Chapman.
Motion to move, Amy Quinn?
I have, did I hear Eileen Chapman for the move?
Yes.
And Council, and Deputy Mayor Quinn for the second?
Sure, yep.
Okay. We have, um, Councilmember Chapman with the move, Amy, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn with the second. We are now on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty one fifty-one, a resolution authorizing an appointment to the Housing Authority, and that person is Donatropoli. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Amy Quinn?
Second, Eileen Chapman.
Yeah, I have the move with, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn, and the second with Councilmember Chapman. We are now on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty one fifty-two, is a res- a resolution establishing regu- regulations for the twenty twenty beach season. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Councilman Kendall, move it.
Second, Eileen Chapman. Yvonne Clayton, oh. Okay, I have the move with, uh, Councilmember Clayton, and the second with, uh, Councilmember Clayton. We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to second reading, public hearing. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phones to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will either call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to participate. When called upon, you will be unmuted to speak. Please state, please state your name and address for the record. Your comments and questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. We are on to the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty dash five. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing Section seven dash fourteen entitled Parking Prohibitive During Certain Hours on Certain Streets of Chapter Seven Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park accordingly. Do I have a motion to open the public to twenty twenty dash five?
Motion to open it, Kendall, Jesse Kendall.
Second, Amy Quinn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? The public hearing is now open on twenty twenty dash five. I will now be calling upon Ernest McNoly. Please state your name and address for the record.
Four hundred Del Lake, Ernest McNoly. Ernest McNoly, four hundred Del Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, apartment five D. I've lived there since August of two thousand and seven, and it's an understatement to say that parking is, uh, difficult and problematic in Asbury. I think what I find most problematic relative to this and similar, um, uh, ordinances, et cetera, is they, they seem to be done, uh, with a lot of lack of transparency. I know I go to certain meetings, like parking meetings, et cetera, and usually the public is nonexistent. Businesses are there, but the public-
Excuse me, Mr. Mc, Mr. McNoly.
Yeah?
If you have questions about the ordinance, please state them or ask them.
Okay. Uh, why are all these things done in such secrecy? And most of them are unpopular. And when the public finds out about them, taxpayers like myself, we're, we're, we're really not happy. And, and yet, when we do try and say something, we don't get a chance to, uh, ask questions or have input. They're done in very, very, in my opinion, partial meetings. So, why the lack of transparency? Why the secrecy? And, and why the fact that everything is approved?
Now, Mr. McNoly, I, I, I don't wanna keep on interrupting you. Uh, we've had this conversation at least fifty times before. Lack of transparency. This was like presented two meetings ago. This is the second reading. You read every agenda. You know what's going on. So, say, lack of transparency is just totally wrong. So, as far as like, again, any questions as far as this individual ordinance, please ask the questions.
Okay. Uh, I'm not referring to me not knowing what's going on. I'm talking about sixteen thousand other people, most of which don't know what's going on.
Mr. McNoly, you're, you're straying from the thing. If you keep on doing it, I'm gonna say you're out of order, and we'll go to the next person. If you have questions about this ordinance, please ask them.
Okay, well, why are you approving this, uh, this, um, measure for, uh, timed parking? Is that what it's for, in certain areas?
Do you have questions about the ordinance?
Yeah, why, why, what is it? How about that?
Did you read it?
Well, no, actually, I didn't. I, I don't know how I would see it.
Well, it was published in the paper twice. Mr. Manzell, you wanna give a brief description?
Sure. Uh, this ordinance in particular is to create a, uh, no parking area on Grand Avenue, just south of Third Avenue, between seven thirty AM and eight AM, and three thirty PM and four PM, Monday through Friday.
And Mayor, if I could just jump in, this is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. Um, this was a condition of an approval that was granted to the College Achieved Charter Public School, and it was a condition that was part of the resolution adopted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment following public hearings that were held on this application. So, anyone who attended those hearings would have been on notice about this. There was, uh, no lack of transparency involved here. Um, this was a condition that was part of a resolution that was adopted in public as part of public hearings concerning this application. The condition to the, one of the conditions to the approval was that the mayor and council were to consider potentially adopting the within ordinance that would create, uh, a no parking provision at this location during specified hours of the day relating to the operations of the charter school.
Thank you.
And that's my comments.
Okay, well, I guess I was at all those meetings, and I know there was a lot of objections, but it gets approved anyway. And there were certainly some critical safety issues that were brought up. But this, this is an example. It just rides through, and all those people who spoke with problems and brought in data and opred things, it doesn't matter. It just comes up for a vote, and it's approved, so.
Mr. McNoly.
I know, blame me and call me out of order.
No, no, you, you're ma- you're making a statement. Do you have questions about the ordinance? If not, I'm gonna say, next question, if you have a question.
No, you answered my question, and I didn't realize exactly what it was. Now I do.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard on twenty twenty dash five? Not seeing any other members? Motion to close the public hearing on twenty twenty dash five?
Motion to close, Kendall. Second, Kendall.
Yeah. Okay, I have the motion from Chapman and the second from Kendall. I will now move on to the roll call. The motion to adopt, I'm sorry, all in favor to close the public hearing on twenty twenty dash five?
Aye.
None opposed? We will now move on to twenty twenty dash five. Do I have a motion to adopt twenty twenty dash five?
Amy Quinn, move to, move, move to adopt?
Kendall, the second. Jesse Kendall, second.
We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I'm sorry, yes, you're on mute, sorry.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty dash five, adopted. We are on to the public hearing for twenty twenty dash six, which is an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending Chapter Seven of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations. Do I have a motion to open twenty twenty dash six to the public?
Move to open, Yvonne Clayton.
Do I have a second?
Second, Jess, Jesse Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, the public hearing on twenty twenty dash six is now open. If there are any members of the public that wish to be heard, um, please dial star nine on your phones to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will either call upon your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to- I will either call upon your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to participate. When called upon, you will be unmuted to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for a public hearing. I am now calling upon Ernest McNolley.
Mr. McNolley, can I interrupt you for one second, please? And I apologize.
You always do. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Probably rightfully so, whatever.
Oh, no, but maybe you're out of order now. How's that?
Okay. I think it would be beneficial to everybody listening to this. When these ordinances coming up, if somebody from staff can give a brief description about what they mean so people like Mr. McNolley knows what he's talking about. So.
Oh, I know what I'm talking about, but why don't you make it clear what you're talking about? And then I'll have a valid question. Because that's a very vague description.
Mr. McNolley, can somebody please give it, from staff, please give a brief discussion about this ordinance and every other ordinance coming up? So everybody knows what we're talking about. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Manzella, Director of Transportation. I'll just give a brief overview of the ordinance. This ordinance modifies Chapter 7 regarding traffic regulations when it comes to abandoned motor vehicles and defines when a vehicle may be removed from the streets, when it's found to be mechanically inoperative. There is no time period listed in the original ordinance. And this is amending that to provide clarity.
Hello?
Thank you.
You know, Mayor, I don't often, Mayor, I don't often thank you. I have to thank you for that. Abandoned vehicles, mine was legal and it wasn't abandoned and it was towed. So I'm the perfect person to comment on this. I'm glad that you're putting a fixed date and time and I guess the standards for which a vehicle would be considered abandoned. Mine is a newer car. It was vandalized and it was legally parked. And it was still, it had a sticker put on it. And the sticker put on 30 days, which everybody knows that that wasn't an appropriate time. But I guess you're amending it now because, heck, look at all the boats and trailers and cars. So my question is, what you're going to do is make it very specific? And you're going to make, so everyone's aware. I guess it'll tell things like, if there's two flat tires and it doesn't start and it's there for three days, it's abandoned. Is that correct? I mean, we're going to get a framework.
Would you like me to answer that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so this ordinance is going to clarify that an abandoned vehicle is may be removed from public streets when it's found to be mechanically inoperative for a period of seven days or it's found without one or more tires or one or more flat tires for a period of seven days.
Well, great. And does that include on public and private property? In other words, we have a lot of buildings, like multiple dwellings, where there's fire lanes around the buildings. And I notice now during this pandemic, there's a lot of vandalism. There's a car sitting on Eighth in the old Sader property with four slash tires, but they don't move it, but it's in the fire lane. So will this take care of all that on private fire lanes as well as public streets? That's important.
Private property is covered under a different chapter. The Chapter 7 only speaks to vehicles parked upon public rights of way.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good thing that the way you presented it, and that'll be good. And is there a chance that the public one will ever be defined like this? Because why is this vehicle sitting on Eighth near the presidential, across the street from it, four slash tires in the fire lane? And the police were there and apparently, I guess you don't have an ordinance that they could remove it because it's in the fire lane, not because it's on private property. But I think the fire lane sort of takes it away from being private because you got to protect the people in that building. So my question is, it sounds like I approve this, but could you also consider in the future, maybe working that out so it'll help with abandoned or vandalized cars in fire lanes of private buildings, especially multiple dwellings?
Thank you. We will take that under consideration.
Yep, yep. We, thank you. We will consider that and need be, we'll adopt that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am now moving on to Amy O'Rourke. Amy?
Hello, it's me again. I'm the parking problem person, but I don't know if this is when I should be speaking. You're still on Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations. I might not be speaking at the right time. I'm talking about the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think you're further down the list. We're getting to you.
All right. So I'll hang up. I'm sorry about that.
No, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, no. Still more time. Hang on, Amy.
Okay, I don't want to create a problem. I don't know when I'm supposed to come in.
Hey, hey, no problem. Thank you.
All right, I am now moving on to 9333. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Gregory Schneck from 315 Eighth Avenue. I might be in on the wrong time. I just wanted to validate what Amy's concern was regarding the parking. Because if I'm reading the new zoning ordinance correctly, it's changing the building height.
Yeah, I hate to interrupt you. We're on the specific ordinance, so it's just got to be like the questions or concerns. It's got to be on this ordinance here a little bit down the road. And hopefully we'll get there.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any additional members of the public that wish to be heard? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on 2020-06?
Motion to close, Kendall.
Second?
Second. Yvonne Clayton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
None opposed? Public hearing closed on 2020-6. Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-6? Move to adopt, Amy Chapman?
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
Okay, I have Councilmember Chapman with the move and I have the second by Councilmember Clayton. I will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to the public hearing for 2020-8, which is a bond ordinance providing for improvement to Memorial Drive, a transportation utility improvement by and in the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, appropriating $5,250,000 therefore, including a grant expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and authorizing the issuance of $5,250,000 bonds or notes of the City of Asbury Park to finance the cost thereof. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2020-8?
Jesse Kendall, motion to open.
Yvonne Clayton, second.
Okay, I have Councilmember Kendall with the motion. I have Councilmember Clayton with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
None opposed? The public hearing on 2020-8 is now open. Please state your name and address for the record.
Melody, if I could jump in first?
Sure.
This is Mike Manzella, Director of Transportation. I'll give a brief explanation of this ordinance.
Sure.
As it states pretty clearly, this is a bond ordinance in the amount of $5.25 million for the improvement to Memorial Drive from Asbury Avenue to Sixth Avenue. This is part of our annual road program. This is the 2019 road program, which the city received a grant from NJDOT. I mean, it's a grant in support of this project. That's about it.
Okay, before we go to the public, I apologize. This is John. Before we go to the public, I just, I think I'm corrected. We're going to pass this tonight, but we're not going to actually draw down on the money because with everything going on in the world, we're not going to increase taxes or anything. So the question I guess I have is like, if we pass this tonight and we give the okay to draw down the money, does it come back before council? Before we actually draw down the money?
Yes, there would be a resolution to authorize the design of this project and then a resolution to authorize the construction of this project thereafter. So you are correct. We do not intend at this very moment to fund this if adopted, based on what's going on in the world.
Yeah, this is just, this is done, this is just being put in place in the event, in the future, five months from now, six months from now, we're able to fund this project since we did receive a grant. We had to put this ordinance on here, introduced this several months ago, but we will not fund this at this time. And if we do look to fund it, it will certainly come back before council.
Thank you.
Okay, members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phones to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will either call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to participate. When called upon, you will be unmuted to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am now calling on Ernest McNolley.
Hi, my question is, of course, to a little bit clearer explanation. I know you're talking from Asbury Avenue to Sixth on Memorial. I'm assuming that's somewhere in and around the old train station and Memorial? I guess where some of the redevelopment is taking place? Are we talking about site development? Or are we talking about train track money? Or maybe a little explanation? And then I would have a question for the city manager. But if you could just be very specific about the $5 million, what's the split between the grant from, I think, the county or the state? And what is the city putting in? So I guess an overview quickly of what it is specifically? And what's the split between, in the $5 million, between the grant and what the city and the taxpayers have to pay on a bond, whether it's approved now and levied later? But it's still, if it's approved now, the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for this. So just a little clarification. And then I wanted to ask the city manager a question.
Okay, Mr. McNolley, I'll wing it. Mr. Manzella can clean it up. I believe the grant we got from the state was like 462,000, whatever. This is like a four and a half million to a $5 million job. Mainly because most towns, when they go to do their streets, they have a mill and a repave. Asbury Park, our sewer system and our sewer pipes go back to the almost 100 years where the terracotta and they're collapsing. So every street that we've been doing the past three years since we started road projects, which has never done in the past, has been total replacement, everything. Because you cannot replace the street and keep on digging it up because of sewer collapses. And that's where the extra cost comes in. That's why it's so high. And it goes from Asbury Avenue going north to the end of Memorial Drive. It's the entire street. And again, with a total sewer repair. And again, I'll let Mr. Manzella clarify my numbers as far as, I think I'm pretty close.
No, you're correct.
Okay, but that's why, again, be it Sunset Avenue, be it Fourth Avenue, be it Washington Avenue, every street we have repaved, we have totally replaced the sewer lines. And it also helps us with rain getting into the sewer lines. Where at the sewer plant, we're pumping like rainwater instead of sewage. So infiltration helps us cut down the cost there. And as far as your question to the city manager, hopefully that answers a little bit of your question. The question to the city manager is going to be, as long as it's relevant to this ordinance, no problem.
Yeah, city manager, I'd just like to know, now we're understanding it's about $4, $4.5 million. The city will pay the tab and a half a million, the county or whomever. This section of Memorial, is it county or is it city only or is it state?
I can answer that. City.
Okay, all right, so it's city. And then if it's city, correct me if I'm wrong. So here's my question. Isn't a lot of the work being done, not, let's say, in county and state improvements like 71 and Deal Lake Drive on the western end? Aren't those projects being funded by revenue from the burgeoning profits from the parking authority? I thought a lot of the work, that's where the money was going to go for the parking because no one could decide. And a lot of the side street work that you see around Asbury seems to have been funded or coming from the parking revenues. And is that because now what we're going through that now we have to, there's no parking revenues now, probably?
No, this is coming out of a transportation utility, yes.
It's what?
This is, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is coming from a transportation utility that we're funding this for, correct?
Hold on, wait a minute. Are you asking me or?
No, Mike.
No. I think my question is, Mayor Moore just explained, it's close enough. About a half a million from wherever, the county or the state. And it seems like the taxpayers are going to put in the other $4.5 million. And clearly defined. Okay, and they clearly defined that it's for sewer work. We understand that. It just seems like, the meetings that I've attended, and this is to the city manager, it seems like for a while, there was a problem what to do with all that revenue, $4 million a year, $5 million a year of parking. And when I was finding out that a lot of the work on side streets, not the county, not the state, and not the federal, whatever is being done in Asbury, but on the side streets, was tapping some of that revenue or all of it from parking. Because where else would all that parking revenue go? If not to something valuable like the side streets, which the taxpayers probably can't afford to pay? But now it seems like the way it's being set up is the taxpayers are going to pay for this. Then my question to the city manager is, where's the parking revenue money? Is it nonexistent or is it being diverted somewhere else?
Well, before the city manager answers, let me just correct you on a couple of things. We have not had a parking authority or utility for over a year. It's a transportation utility. And right, the money from the parking meters is being diverted and used correctly to reduce taxes so we can fix the streets because the streets were in terrible shape. And that's what we're doing. And we go every year and we classify the streets, which ones are worse. And again, we've replaced in the last couple of years, 13% of the streets in the city, basically no cost to the taxpayers by bonding. And the bonds are paid off over like 20 or 30 years. So the cost is minimal and it's all coming out of the transportation utility at this point in time. And it's no impact onto the taxpayers. And somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you are correct. You're correct.
Yep.
Any other questions about this ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, wait a minute. It just seems like, I don't know, maybe I'm going in circles in my questions, but it just seemed to say that parking revenue has been used and diverted to make street improvements, correct?
Not diverted. It's being used as the transportation utility to provide, be it safe streets, be it bike lanes, be it everything, everything for transportation.
I understand. And is this one, from Asbury to Sixth, Memorial?
Yes.
Is it different? In other words, is this one, whether it's approved tonight and you don't activate it for six months, is this one a little different because you have no parking revenue reserve? So therefore, you're bonding it as $450,000 from wherever the county, $4.5 million the taxpayers are going to pay in a long-term bond. And it's this way because of the current situation where there's no parking revenue anymore. And if there was, we didn't have the pandemic and this horrible situation, it would probably be done like the other streets where a lot of the parking revenue would take care of it. That's all. I mean, it's kind of a simple question.
You're right.
Is this one different?
No.
Is this one different?
You're doing, we're doing this the exact same way as it reads. It says bond ordinance from a transportation utility.
Transportation utility, correct.
So it is being funded the same way.
The debt, Mr. McNolley, is going to be paid for out of the.
The, 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 the debt, Mr. McNolli, is going to be paid for out of the transportation utility improvement. However, we're not going to incur the debt at this time, because we don't know what our transportation utility is going to look like in the next couple of months, six months, et cetera. So we're being fiscally responsible by not incurring the debt at this time. However, if we choose to incur the debt, it will be paid for out of the transportation, um, fund.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And is the trans, it, is the, yes, it does, is the transportation fund? In other words, did it encompass the part, what was considered the parking authority? In other words, at, at least you're telling us this four or five million dollars a year, a lot of money coming in for parking, and that's a good thing. The question is, the public's led to believe that the parking authority is the one that's being tapped, those funds. But is what you're saying now, it's the same thing, only we don't really call it the parking authority fund anymore, that's now all incorporated into the betterment of transportation and roads in Asbury? Is it semantics we're talking about here?
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right, that the parking revenues go into the transportation utility, and that's what's funding this street project, as well as the previous street project that we have done.
You know, isn't it amazing how we can all get along?
Thank you.
Can't believe it, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
I am now calling upon one-one-three-three, please state your name and, name and address for the record. One-one-three-three?
Yes, Felicia Simmons, ten thirty-four School Avenue, St. Paul. Ready? Yeah. Okay, um, first, I, I want to thank you for your being fiscally responsible in saying we're gonna hold off. So thank you, and I'm kinda gonna invoke a little bit of, um, King, Duane Moss, in asking since we are bonding so much and we're, uh, a proceeding, um, client in this, um, roadwork, is it possible to make sure that we hire local people, specifically as, as we can, especially after this, um, tragedy? Um, the revenue from that can be life-changing for a lot of people, um, in the future. So we should look into some kinda, see how we can implement and make part of the contingent when we go out for bids, that is as local as possible, and hire as local as possible to make sure that we try to stimulate our own economy here in the city.
Felicia, uh, absolutely, but I mean, we'll, we'll go out to bid, not on this yet. When we go out to bid on any project, we have to, I think, and Donna and Michael will correct me, we have to take the lowest responsible bid. So if Duane has a company that can do a five million dollar job, of course, and is the lowest bidder, of course we'll hire him. But I mean, I don't think there's subs on this.
Yeah, I wasn't saying specifically for him, I was just saying that I'm gonna be his voice, 'cause, you know, he's a, he's a big, um, pro activist for local hiring, um, to make sure.
When we, when, when we go out to bid for this job, everybody can bid on it.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure that it, you know, just be more mindful, right? Um, that we are local, and that our economy is hit, and our economy will go. So if we can possibly, you know, stimulate some of that five million dollars inside town, that will be beneficial for everybody.
Totally agree with you, and we will do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that want to be heard on twenty-twenty-eight? Not seeing any other members of the public, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on twenty-twenty-eight? Eileen Chapman, move to close. You're going to call you question. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
None opposed? The public hearing is now closed on twenty-twenty-eight. Do I have a motion to adopt twenty-twenty-eight?
Jesse Cano, um, a motion to adopt.
Amy Quinn, second. We'll now move on to the roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-eight adopted. We're now on to the public hearing for twenty-twenty-nine. It is an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, adding chapter thirty-seven-four mandatory affordable housing set-aside to the code of the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion to open twenty-twenty-nine to the public?
Yes, you can, no more.
Quinn votes open.
Okay, I have, I have a member close. No, go ahead, Melody. With, with the motion to move, to move, and Deputy Mayor Quinn with the second. We will now open, with, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? Okay, twenty-twenty-nine is now open to the public.
Melody, I was gonna ask.
Melody. Okay, Michelle, yeah, I just think we should have, as the mayor indicated before, before we, um, go into the public, if I could have Beth or Michelle just give us an overview of this, and as we approach each ordinance, if we could just do the same thing, 'cause it gets very confusing as we go through these. So, um, whoever can just go through this first before we open it to the public, thanks.
Sure.
I was gonna ask our affordable housing consultant, Beth McManus, to just, give a very brief summary of this particular ordinance.
Okay, and Beth will do, okay, go ahead, Beth.
Sure, this ordinance, twenty-twenty-nine, is, uh, referred to as the mandatory set-aside ordinance. And this ordinance is specifically designed to capture opportunities to create affordable housing units in places that are, uh, that may be subject to a rezoning, a use variance, a new redevelopment plan, or redevelopment plan amendment, provided those things, the use variance, rezoning, et cetera, applies to multifamily housing or attached dwelling, and it creates five or more units beyond or above that which is currently permitted. So if you own a site that is currently allowed to build, let's say, ten units, if you receive use variance approval to build twelve units, this ordinance does not apply. However, if use variance approval is granted to build fifteen or more units, so that increases five units, the ordinance would apply. And what that means is that an affordable housing set-aside of twenty percent will be required. So in that example I just gave, twenty percent of those fifteen or more units would be required to be low and moderate income housing. And so that's, that's a very brief summary of the mandatory set-aside ordinance. I will also say, uh, sorry, that it applies citywide, it's not specific to any particular lot or zone in the city. But it does not change the zoning on any property.
And Mayor, can I also, uh, make a statement, this is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney?
By all means, please.
Yes, so this is the first of eight separate affordable housing ordinances that are scheduled for second reading and public hearings this evening. By way of background, the Asbury Park Planning Board adopted a third-round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan in February of twenty-nineteen that recommended amendments to the city's land development regulations intended to promote and incentivize the creation of affordable housing units and middle-income housing units in inclusionary development. Inclusionary development is defined as development that contains a mix of market rate and affordable and/or middle-income housing units. The Housing Element and Fair Share Plan was thereafter adopted as an element of the city's master plan by the planning board. Following the planning board's action, the council has now, uh, prepared, had these eight ordinances prepared in order to effectuate the goals and objectives of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. These ordinances were previously referred by resolution of the council to the planning board for review and recommendation as required by law. The planning board has reviewed each and every one of the ordinances and has recommended them to the council without amendment. And they were introduced at the last meeting of the mayor and council, and they are, all eight of them are on the agenda tonight for public hearing and second reading. And the specific ordinance that's before the mayor and council right now, as Ms. McManus has indicated and described, relates to a mandatory affordable housing set-aside. And that's my statement, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, Fred, can I say, and all those meetings were well advertised, and public had every right to participate in them?
We will now open the public hearing on twenty-twenty-nine. I am now calling upon Ernest McNolli.
What, do I hear, do I hear chuckles when my name is announced? That's okay, Ernest McNolli, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Unit Five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, oh-seven-seven-one-two. Uh, you know, I have, I have to say, my question is, do, do you understand that the public, there are people like myself who know a little bit about buildings and property and investments and development, who, maybe you don't think so, but we do, and when we go to all these meetings, and when it gets to the point where we are now, where you start to approve things, you really have to understand, it's not that you didn't advertise along the way, it's just that those few public who show up are most frequently adamantly opposed, and most of the time, we're just told, be quiet, you know, this is just gonna happen anyway, we're out-lawyered, even our own lawyers tell us be quiet.
Mr. McNolli.
My question is, uh, my question is, you're saying this is one, one of eight, one of eight, correct? Is this the R-three-one near, near, uh, Deal Lake Drive?
No, Mr. McNolli, that's a separate ordinance.
All right, you just said there's a group of eight that we're gonna be talking about, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, there are eight separate ordinances. There is one in particular that creates the Deal Lake Drive Inclusionary Housing Overlay District, and that is, uh, relates to certain properties that are in the R-three zone, that's a separate ordinance.
Yes, okay, Mr. Attorney, so the one that we're talking about is what, just tell me where it is?
Well, uh, Ms. McManus just provided a background.
Okay, so it, it applies, it applies to all eight?
It applies city, citywide.
Okay, and does it have anything to do with increasing the density? In other words, with existing, let's say, two-story or three-story buildings, that in these areas, a developer may say, look, I'm gonna demolish it, and now I wanna put up eight stories or four stories, and I'm gonna put twenty percent affordable, because it's really like, and I don't mean it personally, but it's like a bait and switch. In other words, you make it sound like you're doing it for affordable housing, but really, you're getting eighty percent of it for, for hyper condominiumia prices. So, I don't know, this just sounds like the, the same thing, but my question is, uh, is there anything that we can do, like to really have the public know more about these approvals, before they just seem to sail through, because, I don't know, it seems like when I'm at meetings, am, am I really one of the two or three people that come in and complain and, and wanna know more? Because where's the rest of Asbury? They only complain when they see what you build, and then they wanna know, how did that happen? I'm sitting here in Ocean Grove now, looking at the Asbury, at the Ocean, uh, Club building, it blocks out the whole view of the East Coast. All right, so my question is, it, this isn't the Deal Lake Drive piece, but it's just to do with sort of paving the way for, on these eight locations, if whatever can get approved, twenty percent of it has to be low income, is that correct?
The ordinance requires that where the planning board, zoning board, or the city council permits five or more additional units beyond that which the zoning currently permits, that an affordable housing set-aside be applied. It does not affect the height, density, zoning parameters of any particular property in the city, nor does it, does it facilitate any approvals that a developer may request from the planning board, zoning board, or council. It simply states, if one of those bodies grants, uh, an applicable approval, one that includes, that permits five or, five or more new units beyond that which is currently permitted, and provided those units are multifamily or attached housing, that an affordable housing set-aside be applied. It does not in any way, shape, or form change the burden of proof applied, or otherwise change the criteria necessary for developers to have those requests approved.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Uh, does this mean we're talking about new development now, vacant land?
It could be vacant land, it could also be existing developed properties that a developer seeks to request a change to, via one of those mechanisms.
So then it could be, somebody owns a development with two-story buildings, they wanna come before and get approvals to make them four-story or five-story. If that's approved, they have to do it with twenty percent affordable.
Yes, it does not require that they get that approval from the zoning board, zoning board, or council.
No, I didn't say that, but, but I don't know too many approvals.
I know, I just wanted to be clear.
I don't know too many approvals that don't get approved in Asbury. I think in my years to come, and I've heard like three noes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am now moving on to Felicia Simmons.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Felicia, go.
Yeah. All right, um, so my, my question, um, just, just, um, this is one of eight. So this is the one for only if you get an ordinance, um, um, five more than you want to amend your ordinance. This is the, the one that just went through the planning board.
Right, this is that set-aside, that if you get that increased density or increased number of units, not in any specific zone, then you must provide an affordable housing set-aside.
Okay, overall, and, and, and in this, um, ordinance, right, it's, uh, for affordable and moderate, correct? Or is that what?
Yeah, it's, it's, it only applies to low and moderate income housing. It does not require, or, does not require middle-income housing, which is a topic in some of these other ordinances, and it does not permit a developer to build middle-income housing instead of low or moderate income housing.
Okay, and just, just for some of the, um, people on the board, can you kinda give like a, um, I don't know if you have it, but you probably do, um, I, I don't right now, 'cause I'm literally painting my, um, living room. But, um, the guidelines, the, the income guidelines for, um, moderate and, um, a low income, or affordable?
Yes, yes, when we talk about affordable in the state of New Jersey, what that means is low and moderate income housing, and that is based, uh, there's income restrictions, maximum income, in order to qualify for affordable housing, is based upon the household size. And the household must, uh, have an income at or below eighty percent of the region's median income. So if the region's median income happens to be one hundred thousand dollars, in order to qualify for affordable housing, your household income must be not more than eighty thousand dollars. And so within the category of affordable housing, on, at or below that eighty percent of median income, it's further broken down into very low, low, and moderate income housing, with very low being at or below thirty percent of the region's median income, low income being between thirty and fifty percent of the region's median income, and moderate income housing being between fifty percent and eighty percent of the region's, uh, uh, region's median income. When other ordinances, uh, come up for public hearing, we'll talk about middle-income housing. And that is, uh, it is not defined as affordable housing in New Jersey for reasons I, I can get into at that point if folks are interested. But that is a, a different type of, of restricted housing, is sometimes referred to as workforce housing, and that is between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent of the region's median income.
So saying you can be in affordable housing and make, you know, um, a hundred, so as, I think Monmouth County is about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty at the average, so you can probably be in low, affordable housing and be making about ninety thousand to, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars a year?
Well, that depends on your.
A family of four, about a family of four, as a family of four.
Uh, let's see, one moment, I'll just confirm this for you. So in Monmouth County, uh, you guys are, were in a region referred to as Region Four. The median income for a four-person family is, as you said, roughly a hundred thousand dollars, is about a one hundred and three thousand dollars, ninety-two, one hundred three ninety-two dollars. The median income for a four-person family is, as you said, roughly $100,000, is about $103,92. So the maximum income for a moderate-income household is just over $82,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's it.
And now moving on to 6557, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Stuart Lieberman, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, thank you very much. It's my understanding that, oh, and I live at 400, excuse me, I own in the Santander, 400 Deal Lake Drive. It's my understanding that the planning board addressed the subject, the substance of this ordinance over a year ago, is that accurate?
Sort of, this ordinance has been discussed for quite some time. The planning board adopted a housing element and fair share plan in 2019, I believe, yes, 2019.
February.
And in there, oh, February 2020, I'm sorry, 19, rather. And at that point, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan recommended this specific ordinance. And so that was the first time it was discussed publicly, was during that Housing Element Fair Share Plan process. Additionally, the planning board held a public meeting to discuss this in March of this year.
Okay, thank you. My problem is this, it's procedural and it's jurisdictional, and it relates to this and the next seven ordinances. Specifically, the Bill 83850, which allows for virtual meetings by government bodies, is intended to be limited to matters necessary for the continuing operation of government. This matter has been floating around Asbury for well over a year, and therefore could hardly be deemed necessary for the operation of Asbury Park. There is no reason why this could not have been put aside until we had a regular meeting where we could have seen the exhibits, where everybody could have been present. And while I very much admire the mayor and the council, and I very much admire Asbury Park in general, sometimes even those of us who are admirers have to say when we have a disagreement, and in this case, I don't believe that this should have been the subject of a virtual meeting, and I think it's not only, I think it's inconsistent not only with the letter of A3850, but I think it's absolutely inconsistent with the spirit. And I would ask that these eight ordinances be tabled until we can have an actual in-person meeting, which is going to be within the next few months, and otherwise, I really think this is improper. I will have comments later about the bill later, 'cause I don't think you're gonna do what I suggested, but I do wanna put that on the record. If I don't have anything further, thank you for your courtesy.
Okay, I am now on to Amy O'Rourke, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Officer Sched, Asbury Court.
Yes, hi, this is Michael O'Rourke, I'm Amy's husband. This, we're actually more concerned with 2002-11, is that coming up at a later point in time in this meeting?
Yes, we are on 2020-9 at the moment.
How many more are there before we get to 2020-11? Is there one or two more?
2020-10 will be next, and then we'll be on to 2020-11.
Alright, I'll reserve my comments till then, thank you.
You're welcome. I am now on to Maureen Nevin, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you, it's Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Drive, Deal Lake Court. So there's some confusion about what is germane to which one of these ordinances, so just correct me if I'm reading out a question that's not appropriate to the ordinance. In the course of the feasibility research necessary prior to the forming of this plan, what number of affordable units, in doing the math here, not including units for middle-income tenants, will this, will this plan generate? And how does that number compare to the number of low or moderate-income housing units already present in Asbury Park? How many units are there currently, and how many units have been destroyed? I haven't been stopped yet, so I'm gonna keep going. Specifically, yeah, it's an ordinance for Deal Lake Drive. How many units will be added to the affordable homes in R3? Okay, I'm gonna hold that off. Maybe you, alright, I'll just read it out. How many units would be added to affordable homes in R3 if the maximum incentives are accepted and build-outs and set-asides are engaged? And also, the other part of that question, I understand that AP has reached its affordable housing requirement with the plans that are already on the books for new housing. So I'm asking, why are we projecting more at this time? And why aren't we waiting for the next round, which would be, I guess, in five years from now? And also, I'd like to know, why aren't we including affordable housing in the waterfront redevelopment area? You know, I've been here since 99 and stood in all those lines when we were going over the first redevelopment plan, and it definitely was within our original plan that there would be affordable units on the waterfront, and in negotiations, it was negotiated so that they would put these units elsewhere. And so that was not the will of the people originally. So I will ask if you can address some of those points, the points that I raised here. Thank you.
I think I can address a number of these questions, and I'm sorry, folks, this is Beth McManus, I don't think I identified myself very well previously. One of your questions was, how many affordable units will this create? And then I think a follow-up was, how does that compare to the number of units that exist and that are required to be created in the city? And how do these numbers work together? So on the first part, how many affordable units, or perhaps market rate units as well, will the mandatory set-aside ordinance create? And then I think you also referenced the R3 Deal Lake ordinance, and we're not on that ordinance yet, but let me, I can answer that question for all of the ordinances. There has been no build-out analysis of the cities, of the entire city, or any of the specific zones that are addressed in the other zoning, inclusionary housing ordinances, that would project the number of affordable units. And that was done in part because the city's affordable housing opportunities are almost entirely based upon redevelopment, as opposed to undeveloped land where it's a simple and easy calculation, you know that the land will ultimately be developed, but in a city like Asbury Park, we have existing buildings that may or may not be retained, and so there's a build-out analysis that's much more complicated. And so that was not conducted, in part because it's very difficult to project what individual property owners will decide to redevelop their sites and which ones will not. But it was also not done because the city, and this goes to your second, one of the other parts of your question, the city does not have an affordable housing obligation that this mandatory set-aside ordinance or the other ordinances are required to address. Unlike most municipalities in New Jersey, Asbury Park is what's referred to as an urban aid municipality. And so that means that the, I'm gonna say the primary component of their affordable housing obligation, which these ordinances address, is, has not been assigned to the city. Urban aid municipalities do not have what's referred to as new construction or third-round affordable housing obligation. And so what we have here is a city that has decided to address affordable housing, not because the courts have wagged their fingers at them, but instead because the city recognizes that it would like to have a inclusive community, not only now, but also moving into the future as housing prices change, and as perhaps trends go upward for housing prices. And so these ordinances will ensure that there can be a mix of households that can find housing in the city, from very low to very low-income to perhaps very wealthy. And so while we don't, so these ordinances will address the aspirations originally addressed in the city's reexamination report, and then followed up on the housing plan, but they are not necessary to meet a specific affordable housing obligation. I think there may be another part of the question that I may have overlooked, so if so, please let me know.
Yeah, and it's a little bit difficult to hear you, Beth, I don't know whether you're really far away from your mic or not.
I'm sorry to hear that, I'll speak up.
Thank you, yes, that helps a lot. Yeah, the other part was, I said, if we've already reached our obligation, why are we doing this now instead of five years from now? And I also asked, why aren't we including affordable housing in the waterfront? Why is that considered a golden, you know?
So the waterfront redevelopment area has not been included in the city's housing plan, and that is done, that was done, rather, specifically because the redevelopment plan is already in place, has already been adopted, and is actually being implemented at this point in time. And by implemented, not only do we see some construction, but also there are redevelopment agreements already in place. And so a change to the zoning would either, and Mr. Ferrucato can correct me if I'm wrong, would either not be applicable in that area, or would contradict the existing, and/or would contradict the existing redevelopment agreement. Notwithstanding, the city is aware, and if there's an opportunity to negotiate or to amend redevelopment plans in the waterfront redevelopment area, it may at that time consider if and how to incorporate affordable housing requirements into those plans.
So it, you know, I can't understand that particular rationale, because if the city wants to have that diversity, they wanna be truly a mixed community, why would they leave out the most important area?
So, this is Donna, and Fred, you can correct me as well, just to confirm, when the redevelopment agreements were done, I think back in 2002, and Mayor Moore, I'm sure could correct me as well, there was no affordable housing obligation in those agreements, and those still stand to this day. So we are not able-
There was an affordable housing contribution that was part of the waterfront redevelopment plan, but not actual onsite construction.
Correct, and so that is why these ordinances will not relate to the waterfront redevelopment area.
You know, I just don't see how that, then we could be a mixed community, I just don't see how that-
Yeah, that was done, you know, many, many years ago, it wasn't done by this council, and it's what, you know, that's what the agreements are in place now.
I would still object on those grounds. And, I have another question here. Yeah, you know, in the last, in the last run-through, when there was eminent domain, you know, a lot of seizing of properties and stuff, I remember very well, a resident, George Carey, and his mother had two family homes, and he worried for years, and his mother, an older woman, had to worry until the day she died, whether they were gonna be taken. And the councilman, Jim Bruno, at the time, asserted many times at the council meeting that George Carey's houses would not be taken. And so there was this capriciousness to the enforcement of the redevelopment plan. And I just want to be reassured by the council and you gals too, that that sort of capriciousness has been eliminated in the language of this affordable housing plan. So I would add to that.
If I could just interject at this point, Mayor, and you can certainly answer Ms. Nevin's question, but we are starting to get off track here. This specific ordinance deals with a mandatory affordable housing set aside, and we really should request that the public, when they come forward and they ask their questions, that they are specifically asking questions about this specific ordinance that's subject to public hearing. Since we have so many ordinances scheduled for public hearing, we could have an extremely long meeting if we don't keep focused on the specific ordinances that are open for public hearing.
Well, if we need to move that to another one, I'm willing.
You can't move it to another one, Maureen, unless it relates to that ordinance, right? It has to, your question has to reflect the ordinance.
Yeah, if there's another one that's more appropriate to my question, and I wouldn't have any problems moving it to it. So is that not in any of the eight? You know, is that not appropriate to any of the eight ordinances about the affordable housing plan? You know, 'cause I'm, I think it's a very important question to people who own property here, that, you know, so-and-so's house was taken out of, off of the map because of what reason? Gosh, turned out it was Kate Molina's friends, you know, this happened over and over again, so I would want to-
Okay, Maureen, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, okay.
I totally agree with Fred, I'm gonna ask Fred, I'm gonna ask Donna, I'm gonna ask Beth, if people are straying from the ordinance, shut it down immediately, and then we'll get to the next ordinance. And Maureen, just as far as, like, you brought up George Carey, I mean, I've known him many more years than you, and his houses were not taken by eminent domain or by anything, the families-
I'm sorry if I implied that, if I implied that, they were, they were to be taken.
They were, but they weren't, the family decided to-
That's my point, though.
The family decided to sell them for a good profit, that was their decision, and again, we have to stay on the court-
Many years later.
Okay, we have to stay on the ordinance, and please, all the professionals, if somebody's straying, that'll be the next one, and we'll go on. Thank you, Maureen.
Alright, thank you.
I am now calling upon Gregory, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments or questions, can only be about the ordinance being presented.
Sure. Gregory Schnack, 315 Eighth Avenue. Mr. McNolley, thank you for standing up for us, but my question here is, well, I have multiple parts, so bear with me a little bit. So 2020-9, it says mandatory, why is it mandatory?
It is mandatory because if the rezoning, the variance, the redevelopment plan amendment is granted, then the body granting that approval, such as the planning board, zoning board, must then apply a 20% set aside along with it. So yes, you may increase the density, however, you now must also provide an affordable housing set aside. That's what's mandatory about it. It's not mandatory that the board grant the approval, but if they do, then they shall apply the affordable housing set aside.
Okay, so we almost have a circular argument where these ordinances rely and stack upon each other. Okay, so my, so this next, second part of my question then is, if 2020-9 applies to, if I understand correctly, all of Asbury? if I understand correctly, all of Asbury, or all of Asbury Park, what is the difference between 2020-9 versus 2020-11? Can you, can you make the distinction for me?
Mm-hmm. So 2020, well, all of the other zoning ordinances, whether it's 11, uh, 12, et cetera, they apply to specific districts or, or specific properties in the city. And what that states is the zoning is amended to permit X, Y, and Z. X, Y, and Z being specific uses, whether it's residential uses and perhaps additional non-residential uses, and it does so at specific density zoning parameters, et cetera. And along with that, those specific parameters, an affordable housing set aside is applied. And so if a developer is going to utilize, uh, a zoning ordinance, at that point there are specific standards that they must meet, such as building height, density, setback, et cetera. In 2020-9, the mandatory affordable housing setting, set aside ordinance, those are specifically designed for developers that are seeking relief or a change from their current zoning. And so that's the distinction. The other ordinances create new zoning parameters that, that shall be followed by a developer. The mandatory set aside ordinance is intended to, uh, to apply to those cases where a developer receives an approval in a way that's inconsistent with the existing zoning.
All right. So, yeah, I, I understand that, you know, e- each of the ordinances applies to, you know, to a different zone, but it sounds like they're, they're all just saying 20% needs to be set aside for affordable housing. And, and so that, that's where I'm not really quite making, it's not clear to me how 2020-11 is differing, it, it's saying 20% needs, if you wanted, if you want to build, you know, additional units, um, y- you need to, 20% of them need to be affordable housing, and that seems to be what 2020, 2020-9 is also saying.
I'm gonna jump in. I'm sorry, this is Michelle Alonso, the director of planning redevelopment, 'cause I'm gonna try and break it down a little simpler. We have different, these ordinances are mostly broke out by zone, and there's zones that currently permit medium to high-density apartment units, basically apartment buildings. That's one of the reasons we have so many of these ordinance, tent ordinances tonight. They all have a requirement for affordable housing for the building of apartment buildings. And I'm breaking it down very simply. This one, the first one, is not for a specific zone, but if someone comes to the city, whether it's via the zoning board of adjustment, which has the power to grant use variances, or if they come to the municipal council and they say, "I want to build an apartment building," then they would have an affordable housing requirement. This does not permit affordable housing in all zones in the city. The R1 and the lower-density, um, districts, this, this does not require affordable housing. This is mainly aimed at apartment development. So mo- most of these ordinance tonight, they talk, theirs for the specific zones that require, that not require, permit apartments. And this one tonight is if any, this first one we're talking about tonight, is if anyone comes to the city requesting an apartment building. Not that the city has to give it to them, but if the city does believe the apartment building should go on a particular lot, they would have the 20% requirement. Is that clear?
Uh, it's still bouncing off of me. I apologize. Like, there, there's a nuance in there that I'm not quite grasping.
The city is divided into different zoning zones, into different zones. And different zones permit different intensities of development. The ordinances that follow this one tonight have put in an affordable housing requirement in those higher-density zones. Anyone in the city can co-, either go to the zoning board of adjustment or the municipal council and request, but they have to have a good reason to build higher density in the city. Zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board, where they have to weigh the public welfare when they make that decision. And this, again, this first one is about a request to that board or to the council for higher, for higher density that is not permitted in the city currently. This would give an affordable housing requirement to those who seek an exception for density, and only if, if the city grants it. Not saying the city will grant it, not saying it makes the city grant it, only if the city were to grant it.
Okay, so if, in, in one of the, in, in one of the zones, ex-, you know, excluding, you know, the, the proposed inclusionary zone, uh, proposed in 2020-11, if somebody's looking to build a larger building, a higher-density building, in order to be, if approved to do that, they will be required to have the, the, uh, the, the 20% low-income housing?
Yeah, or affordable housing, yes.
Okay, I'm tracking.
Okay.
Actually, let, let me tack on one thing, 'cause I did see in one of the ordinances that the, the, the zoning height for buildings, uh, being changed from five stories to eight stories, is that across all of the zones, or is that just in, you know, does that just apply to, uh, ordinance 2020-11?
Each zone is, uh, the, has, is every, the, it's every zone has its own particular zoning. So the height varies in all the different zones. For just not having anything to do with affordable housing, just how they're zoned. Main Street redevelopment plan has different height requirements than CBD redevelopment plan, different, uh, different than the B district. So height is particular to certain, to zones.
Okay, I yield.
Okay.
Okay, I am now calling on 1915. Please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments or questions can only be about the ordinance being presented.
Beth Stuckey, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I have definite questions about this ordinance, and the way they're being presented, it's very hard not to bump into the other ordinances, so there's gonna be crossover, and if it gets too specific, I'll call back for the next one. But for this ordinance, um, I'd like to state, first of all, that I did have some concerns. I did speak with Michelle Alonso, I, as, as directed. I got some answers, so thank you, Michelle, but I'm, I still have some concerns. First of all, I'd like to back up with Mr. Lieberman, who called in earlier. Um, I find that there's a lot to discuss with these ordinances, especially since, as I'm hearing, there is different requirements for each zone, and different heights, and different, you know, different, um, things required for builders to find out, and, um, and I think that that alone is a lot of information, and I think, uh, Mr. Lieberman pointed out quite well, that if this was first presented in February 2019, and then not again until March of this year, um, when we're in a pandemic and people are on the phone, and it does say in the letter that, you know, if we want to look at slides, we can look at slides, but that's sort of also is a cross purposes with those people who don't have that ability to look at the slides on computers, and might want to, uh, if they're pertinent to this discussion. And I don't understand, in this climate, why, I, I do understand the need for affordable housing, so I don't want to make light of that, and that's not my purpose here. But I think there's a lot of concerns for people across all the districts, and I think that this does not seem the time to present a huge rezoning plan, especially as you're adding layers to it, uh, where people can't really access each other to discuss it, and really to come to and be face-to-face and discuss this. I, I don't find this the right time to do it. It doesn't seem an emergency. So my question might be right now is, is it an emergency? And if so, why? Are there plans that you're aware of, that you want this passed so that the affordable housing will apply? Are there permits and whatever? I don't know all the right terms, so please excuse me. But, you know, is the planning board, or whoever, the construction office, or whoever has to know this, um, aware of major building that is, that is being proposed or has already been filed, that you need to get this passed tonight? Because if there isn't, I grant you, I understand that it could happen any day, but I think if it's waited this long, you know, another couple of months, I, I, I would like to say that I think it's worth waiting for the good of the community, for, I hate using that word transparency again, but for the transparency of the community. I don't think that this is the right way to, to go ahead with rezoning on this ordinance. Um, I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. And so I do want to know, is there something that the planning board knows that the rest of us aren't hearing, why you're putting this through tonight for a vote?
Um, so this is Amy Quinn, uh, and I'm on, on the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, so I just want to point out, there were, and Beth, please correct anything I say that's inaccurate, but at least three, if not more, public sessions, um, about the affordable housing plan throughout the last year, and then multiple, multiple meetings with COA, which is the, uh, and Beth, correct me, Coalition on Affordable Housing.
With, uh, Fair Share Housing Center, I think you mean.
I'm sorry, Fair, Fair Share Housing Center. And then along with our affordable housing, our local affordable housing committee, uh, that we met with multiple times. So there, there aren't plans, I don't think the planning board knows something we don't, but what we do know is that people are getting priced out of Asbury Park. And it is a priority, certainly, for this council to ensure that we keep the people in Asbury as best we can under the circumstances. Um, we want to stay in Asbury, which is why getting and moving forward on the affordable housing ordinances. Um, and the mandatory set aside is so important to us and something that we're really passionate about. Having said that, um, if there's an ordinance that, um, we didn't do right, or that doesn't work out down the road, and we need to amend it, I think we're 100%, um, we're a, honestly, we're a council, if we, if we, if we do something wrong, we'll, we'll fix it. Nobody, nobody's gonna stand by a, a, an ordinance that harms people in, in a way that we didn't foresee. But, but it is imperative for us to ensure that there is a mandatory affordable housing set aside, um, and to protect as many people as we possibly can at this point, who want to remain in Asbury Park. So when you say we could do this in months down the road, um, I just don't think that's what the, the Affordable Housing Committee, which Yvonne and I are on, along with members of the public and other people, that's, we, we want to see it move forward, and we want to start, uh, protecting the people who want to remain in Asbury Park.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I didn't say months down the road, or maybe I did, but I said a couple of months. Nobody really knows what months means at this point, and again, I appreciate the need for affordable housing, that, that's a concern that I appreciate everybody's been working on. Um, my understanding, um, and I'm not that connected, so I don't want to speak out of turn, is that maybe there are some people who have worked on this, who appreciate that maybe now is, you know, it's, it's okay if it waits another couple of months. Again, if there's no, nobody wants to see people priced out. I don't want to be priced out myself, but you may say you can rectify it later, but I think it's pretty clear that rectifying something after the damage is done is m- more difficult than before the damage is done. So for instance, um, other people have brought up that the waterfront area is not, does not have affordable housing. Well, you know, that's zoning, that was done before you, I heard that said. Um, I don't know if that's, if there's any attempt to rectify that or not, but, um, my concern now is not only that people stay here, agreed, but so, that the people who stay here, and who are here, um, have a place, let's say, like, I live, I live on Deal Lake Drive, right? So it's a high-density area, there's a lot of apartment buildings here and multiple dwellings, versus on some of the streets that are, um, that you're talking about, that are not including Deal Lake Drive, which is in the next ordinance, or the next two ordinances. But if you're talking about, um, about doing this, you know, we've been talking about this pool club forever, we're talking about parking issues, that when, as soon as you start adding five units in those ordinances that you're discussing now, those five extra units might be three extra cars, or five extra cars, we don't really know, right? So, because we don't know how many more there are gonna be, and each zone is different. So now we have a, you know, I don't really want to get into the pool club issue, but there's already concern about parking there, and now we're talking about driveways, um, the fact that 20%, this 20% doesn't require, there's no parking requirement. Uh, Michelle addressed that, I asked her that. She said that, um, there's not a lot of car usage in the 20%. Well, you know, unless there's a scientific study to say there won't be car usage, any amount of cars is more cars. So in a city that we're really concerned about density and affordability and parking and people coming in in the high season and all of these things, I would think that'd be also part of the concern going on, and that's the part that I think bears discussion at another time, at a time, and hopefully not months down the road. I don't think we're talking months down the road, maybe two. And I know it may be a lot after waiting, you're saying there were multiple meetings, I guess, I, I only heard about the February and, and March one, and March was virtual, but if there were other meetings along the way, my fault, I wasn't tuned in, um, and maybe other people too, obviously. But there are other concerns, and unless there's, it's a dire need all of a sudden to retain people in the next two months, or three months even, if it really goes to three months, I, I think that this is a, a discussion that bears further discussion face-to-face. And that's, that is a concern.
If I can jump in, uh, just for a moment, I'm sorry to interrupt the speaker, but, um, a lot of the issues that were brought up don't necessarily relate to the specific ordinance that's the subject of this public hearing, and we really have to make sure that the speakers, when they, when they speak, they're, they're talking about the specific ordinance. Um, and, you know, we started getting into parking and a lot of other different topics that really don't relate to this particular ordinance. I will say that these ordinances have been, um, being worked on, there's been an ongoing process for months and months and months involving the Affordable Housing Coalition in bringing these ordinances forward, and it, it, this, in no way, shape, or form, has been rushed, and it's been completely out of our control that the pandemic hit-
In addition, also, Fred, the planning board, it, it has been in front of the planning board for, mm, okay, just, just FYI.
Absolutely. It, it, it just is the circumstances that we're stuck with right now, unfortunately, that all governing bodies are required to hold these meetings, uh, in this forum right now, given current circumstances. But, um, this isn't something that, you know, was rushed, that, that the city council is moving forward deliberately to do, uh, because we're doing it by way of, uh, teleconference as opposed to in-person meetings. This is, these are the circumstances that we're, that we're dealing with right now. But, um, we really do have to stick to the specific ordinances, and I apologize, but I just have to say that one more time.
Well, can I just throw one thing in? If you're to, I don't know how you separate out, and maybe you can answer this for me. Um, when the planning, when you talk about these ordinances and you talk about housing, affordable housing, and any kind of housing, that includes affordable housing, of course, how does the city planning board reconcile, how, how do you work together to make that a plan? Because I don't understand how you can separate out housing from all the needs of housing, which are the people that move in- which are the people that move in, have what they need, which is possibly parking.
All of those issues will be reviewed when applications are made to the planning board.
Well, it's already clear that 20% is not required, right? Is that correct?
Well, this particular ordinance will require that if a developer or property owner applies for relief from the zoning board of adjustment or from the council in order to build five or more new units that they're not otherwise entitled to under the existing zoning, that if they are granted the approval to do that, to have the additional density that they're not otherwise allowed to have, that they are required to incorporate a 20% affordable housing set aside.
Right, which doesn't include parking, required parking.
Any projects that we show before the board would be reviewed for parking. That would be part of the overall discussion that would be held before the board.
Okay, then maybe I'm just talking about the next ordinance, so I'll wait and ask that again on the next one for Deal Lake Drive. Thank you very much.
I am now calling upon Stuart Lieberman. Mr. Lieberman, have you already spoke on 2020-9?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm going to refer to the city attorney then. Fred, Mr. Lieberman, you already spoke on 2020-9?
Yes, but at regular meetings, people are allowed to come back and speak again after everybody else has had an opportunity.
This is a public hearing on an ordinance. It's not the open public comment period where the council has a rule of protocol that people only are allowed one opportunity to speak during the public participation board of the meeting. But this is separate from that. So people can speak more than once, but I think out of, as a courtesy to others, that they should wait and let others who haven't been heard proceed. And then once everyone has been heard once, if someone wants to come back and make another comment, they would be afforded the opportunity to do so at that time.
I would have anticipated that's how this was done. That's right. I'll wait until everybody's done. But I do want to comment on your, on your response to my comment because I think you're missing the point. But I'll wait and then I'll explain it.
Okay, thank you. I'm now moving on to 5604. Please state your name and address for the record. And please keep your comments only to the ordinance 2020-9 being presented.
Yes, hi, my name is Julia Matatov, 400 Deal Lake Drive. Just want to mention, can we keep this meeting a little bit shorter? It's been like almost three hours and it's a very long meeting. And I'm really losing patience because it's so many things going on after eight hours of work. How long is this meeting going to continue? For how many hours? It seems like never ending meeting. Can you somehow concise it and make it shorter? Just a comment. Sorry if it's not about the ordinance.
Any response from anyone?
Michelle or Beth?
Well, we have a total of eight ordinances on the agenda. As everybody knows, we're still on the first one. In terms of how long the meeting will go and what the city council's policies and procedures are for meetings, I'm going to have to defer to others. And I'm sorry, this is Beth McManus also for the record.
So let's just keep moving forward. I don't think we have a stop date on time on the meeting tonight. I think we should just try to keep the questions succinct and to the point, and we can try to get answers and move along through the, through all the ordinances. So Melody, who's next up to speak?
I have Gregory Schnack. Gregory, I believe you've already spoke on 2020-9 also.
Yes, I spoke before. And other speakers have brought up material that raises other questions that is requiring me to, you know, to voice my opinion or my input again, along with Mr. Lieberman.
Okay, Fred, the only two speakers I have left are two speakers who have both spoke before. Do you want me to continue with Mr. Schnack?
Yes, if everyone.
Okay, all right.
If we finished with all those who want to be heard and someone who has already been heard would like to make another comment, absolutely. They have the right to do that.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, Gregory, go ahead. Gregory, go ahead. All right.
He said, "Thank you very much."
Oh, okay. I now have Mr. Lieberman.
Okay. Yeah, yes, thank you very much for the courtesy of letting me come back. A few points I want to make. First of all, the meeting should not go indefinitely. It really becomes unfair to the public. It's unfair to me, it's unfair to everybody when you have these weighty and lofty issues in this kind of format going late into the day. It's just really not right. I know you're all volunteers, it's not right for you either. Secondly, your responses to my comments as to Assembly A 3850 are thoroughly misplaced. I understand that you've been working on this issue for a long time. And that notion and those concepts are part of why I love Asbury Park. These are very important issues, and I really admire that you're doing so. But that's not an excuse for using, for conducting this issue or holding this issue at this virtual meeting. The law limits what you can do. You can only do this in the instance of issues that are really absolutely required to conduct business. So if you're voting on budgets, if you're passing bills to hire people that have to be hired, you could do that, but you shouldn't be doing for this. And respectfully, I think what you're doing, and I'm putting this on the record so that if somebody needs to take action later, I want it clear. I think you're exceeding your authority, and I want that very clear. The statute is very clear about what you're supposed to be doing. And just because you believe this is a weighty and lofty issue, which it is, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think your goals are good, and I'm with you largely. I don't like some of the way you're doing it, but that's okay. But that does not mean this is limited to matters necessary for continuing operation of government, and that's all you could do tonight. So I want to make sure that you understand my position and that it's on the record. The other thing, and that you shouldn't be going forward and you should stop this. But the other thing I want to point out is that if you do pass this bill, I think it's important that legislation be amended so that this can't be included as a positive criteria in the weighing of, in the balancing test that's to be applied before the zoning board or planning board. In other words, the fact that this, that there might be an affordable housing benefit by granting relief of five or more extra units must not be considered part of the positive criteria that an applicant might have to set forth in order to meet the test. I think that's critical because if not, this is circular. Because what's going to happen is every, and you know, I do this for a living, and I'm a lawyer and I appear before planning boards and zoning boards all the time. I'm going to be in Bradley Beach tomorrow, like this way. But the point is this, if you don't do that, this is circular. Because what's going to happen is applicants are going to say, hey, you've got these affordable housing benefits. That's positive criteria. You need to give this to me, and you need to include that in the weighing. You need to stop that because that's not fair. Otherwise, it's thoroughly circular, and everybody tonight who's alleged that that's the case is right. They need to cut that off.
Hello?
Mr. Lieberman?
Okay, Mr. Lieberman, have you finished your statement?
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, I was muted, so I kept quiet. That's, yeah, no, I'm finished. I do, I want language proposed to make sure it can't be used for that purpose if you're going to vote on this. That's what I think that needs to happen. This needs to be amended, and I hope a council member proposes to amend it so we can't go into, it can't be part of the balancing before a planning board or zoning board application. Otherwise, it's purely circular, and what people say you were doing tonight is really what's going to happen.
So let me, I can provide, this is Beth McManus. Let me answer a question and correct something in the statement. The application of the mandatory set aside ordinance cannot be used in the criteria to meet any variances that are requested. So there was a reference to positive criteria. For example, an inclusionary housing project, whether it's inclusionary because the zoning requires it to be so or because the mandatory set aside ordinance would apply, is not, is not a use that would meet the positive criteria. You cannot simply respond that I meet the positive criteria in part or wholly because I'm providing affordable housing that has actually been knocked down in case law that occurred in the state previously. In addition to that, there is, there is a statement or a provision in this mandatory set aside ordinance, item number seven, that states this requirement does not create any entitlement for a property owner or applicant for a zoning amendment variance or adoption of a redevelopment plan or amended redevelopment plan or for any approval of any particular proposed project. And so that concern is addressed two ways. One is addressed inherently in the case law applicable to this issue. And two, it's also specifically addressed right there in the ordinance.
And if I can comment on the legislation A 3850, I would have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Lieberman on that because I'm actually looking at A 3850 right now on my phone. And it says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, rule, or regulation to the contrary, during a period declared pursuant to the laws of this state as a state of emergency, public health emergency, or state of local disaster emergency, a public body shall be permitted to perform any of the following by means of communication or other electronic equipment." Number one is conduct a meeting and any public business to be conducted thereat. It doesn't limit it only to emergent public business. It says, "Any public business to be conducted thereat," and continues on with two, three, and four, "cause a meeting to be open to the public, vote, or receive public comment." I recall seeing some information from the New Jersey Division of Local Government Services indicating that governing bodies should limit their executive sessions only to emergent matters. But this legislation does not appear to restrict the governing body from conducting regular business by telephonic equipment during time of public emergency. As to whether the council will consider to adjourn the meeting, depending upon how late we go this evening, that's at the discretion of the governing body to decide when we get to that point.
Well, you know, the bill as proposed, and I believe as adopted, provided, and it was certainly advertised this way, and whenever it was communicated, it was communicated, that meetings would be, quote, "limited to matters necessary for the continued operation of government and which relate to the state of emergency related to COVID-19 to the extent practiced."
That's not initialities from performing any other business. And that's not what's happening in the state of New Jersey right now.
Well, I understand that. But what I am saying is that this is not the type of material that is necessary for the continued operation of government. And for that reason, you're abusing your authority by going forward with this.
I understand that's your opinion.
No, I understand. I, look, we can all disagree, and I just want it on the record because what I think you're doing is just really wrong. But as to the other issue that the, that the witness said, I appreciate what she's saying, and I agree with her. It should never be part of the balancing test. The reality, and I don't know how many planning board and zoning board meetings she's been to, but the reality is it's done all the time. And what happens is applicants go before the board and they'll wave this affordable housing component to the board and say, look, you know, one of the benefits is if you grant this, this is what's going to happen. And so the language should be clear in the bill that it can't be used. Otherwise, it's going to be used. That's what happens.
All right, it sounds like Mr. Lieberman has finished his comments. Are there any other comments by members of the public with regard to ordinance number 2020-9?
I am calling upon Ernest McNolli.
Hello? Yes, Ernest McNolli, 400. Hi, 400 Deal Lake Drive, apartment 5 D Asbury Park in Jersey. So I'm in the thick of this, in probably one of the eight ordinances. I'm sure everyone is. And, and, you know, it's just hard to believe that during this pandemic, you have people from the public on this phone, on this meeting, imploring that you not continue. These are like real estate matters, things that are going to benefit developers. I mean, don't hold this out that we're trying to make affordable housing. Really, during a pandemic? I mean, Deputy Mayor Quinn, you know, you're a lawyer. You're pretty slick the way you present things. And you know what? The public, just, it's just not right. Isn't there any common sense?
Mr. McNolli, please limit your comments, please limit your comments to Ernest 2020-9.
You know what? You know what, attorney? You didn't limit Ms. Nevin, who rambled for half an hour. Now why me? Why? Because you attend parties with her? Really?
No, I resent that remark. That's not the case, but it's completely irrelevant. Do you have a comment about ordinance 2020-9?
Yes, I do. Why are we continuing? This, this requires a long debate, participation, public face to face. We want to see models, we want to see pictures, we want to be face to face. What are we doing this in a pandemic for? What is wrong with this council? You know, how much time did you spend on saving lives at this meeting? Did you, did you talk about masks or anything or tests?
Mr. McNolli.
So my question is.
Back to the ordinance.
Stop. Can this be stopped? So yes or no question?
You have questions about the ordinance?
Are you asking the council to table the ordinance?
I do. Can the voting on the ordinance be postponed?
That is a matter in the mayor and council's discretion. They can decide.
Okay, well, then I'll ask them, mayor and council. I'm asking you as a longtime resident, can this matter be put off to a better time? Because a lot of us are, at this point, are exasperated. We're really worried about our lives and each other's lives. Not about whether some developer, you know, can put six stories up with 20% affordable housing. I mean, I don't know where we're going with this. And you know, when the public hears this, it doesn't sound good. This gets broadcast.
Yes, it does. And again, if you have any questions about the ordinance, please ask them.
Can it be postponed? The voting on it?
That is an option. Do you have questions about the ordinance?
Well, yeah, that's my question. Can you postpone this?
Well, when you're done.
Okay, all right, let me, let me, let me phrase it the way you want it. This ordinance, what's the number of it? 21?
2020-9. Once the public hearing.
2020-9. I'm asking you, under conditions that we're under, listening to everyone, I'm just asking you a simple question. Can we put the voting on this ordinance off to a better time? It's just a yes or no.
I'm not sure who you're directing that question to. Are you asking me as a matter of law? Can the council table ordinance?
You know, Mr. Refredo, I was talking to the mayor. You told me that that's a matter for the mayor and the council. So now I'm asking the mayor and the council, yes or no? Based on the way the public sounds, we're exasperated here, under pressure. We're worried about our lives. And yet, we don't seem to know enough, or some of us don't seem to agree, me being one, with how this is being done without transparency, without public face to face, without slides, without models, without being able to participate in the, what is it? 10 o'clock? What time is it? I mean, it's almost 10 o'clock at night. And we're only on what, the second one? What are we planning here, an all-night affair? I mean, give us a break. Let us go to sleep. Put this off. It's no emergency.
You're repeating yourself. Do you have anything further to say about?
Okay, so, all right, can we put? Okay, Mr. Refredo. Can we, Mr. Mayor, can we put the voting on this off tonight to another time? Yes or no?
Could it be?
No, I don't, how about this?
Question asked, question answered, next.
Hey, I am now on.
Hey, I am now on two, three. Gregory, please keep your comments, data to the ordinance being presented.
Yes, I was speaking before, and in the middle of my statements, I was muted. I, you have, you now have four people, including myself, along in agreement with Mr. Lieberman, that this virtual forum is not the time or place to be doing that. Now, I know legal counsel says it's debatable, but being debatable, it should be postponed until that debate is resolved. You have, you know, as, as Mr. McNolay just mentioned, you have, you know, you're, you're on, you, you have eight ordinances to go through. They're not, they're, they're not severable, they're, they're not, they're, they're all interrelated to each other. It's a much more complex matter than can be handled in a virtual environment. So we should not be rushing. I heard somebody say, you know, there's people, you know, who, you know, were trying to save, you know, people who are trying to, you know, stay within Asbury Park. We're talking, you know, a couple of months. You know, we've also heard a statement that, you know, we can pass ordinances and then we can fix them later. However, we're also being told that the waterfront being subjected to the same terms and conditions for the inclusionary housing is off, off the table because that was a deal that was made beforehand by somebody else, and so, you know, you know, we can't put inclusionary housing in, in the, in the locations of the, of the wealthy developers. There's a lot, there's a lot here, and it's in, and, and these ordinances are interrelated, and it's late. And there's debate as to whether or not this legally is the forum. And quite frankly, I believe you, you know, if you, if you proceed, you're opening yourself up to litigation. So I respectfully ask that we postpone voting on these ordinances.
All right, Mr. Scheck, are you done?
Yeah. Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, a motion to close, 2020-9 to the public.
Move to close, Amy Quinn. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? A motion to adopt 2020-9. Move it, Amy Quinn.
Move, second, please, I'm Clayton.
I have Deputy Mayor Quinn with the move, I have Councilmember Clayton with the second. I will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman? Yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Christine.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Hey, we are now on to the public hearing for 2020-10, which is an ordinance amending the land development regulations of the city of Asbury Park, who amend Chapter 8 redevelopment plan, section 30-110.4, Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan, consistent with and designed to officiate the city's adopted 2019 third grounds housing element and fair share plan. We will now have someone provide a brief overview of ordinance 2020-10.
This is Beth McManus, I can provide that overview. This is an amendment to the existing redevelopment plan, the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan, and so it applies to properties within that redevelop, that existing redevelopment area. The redevelopment plan currently requires an affordable housing set-aside be applied to anybody, a developer producing residential units with, here it requires a 20% set-aside, and it also requires an affordable housing set-aside for any developer creating non-residential floor area, and it's based upon a, a count, an estimate of the number of jobs that would be created per, per square foot of new floor, new retail space, new office space, et cetera. This redevelopment plan was, when originally adopted, was based upon rules that were in effect by the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing. Since the redevelopment plan's adoption, those rules by the Council on Affordable Housing have actually been overturned as they relate to applying an affordable housing requirement to non-residential developers, generally speaking. And so what this redevelopment plan amendment does is it eliminates the affordable housing set-aside that applies to non-residential development, and instead it retains the affordable housing set-aside that is applied to residential development. So as a result, if you are developing land in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, you have an affordable housing set-aside if you build residential units, but there is no affordable housing set-aside required if you build non-residential space, such as retail or office space. So it simply eliminates one aspect of the affordable housing requirement in this existing redevelopment plan.
Okay, we will now, do I have a motion to open 2020-10 to the public?
Kendall.
Move to open, Eileen Chapman?
Second. Jesse Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? 2020-10 is now open to the public. Please keep your comments regarding 2020-10 only. I will, when you dial nine or raise your hand, you'll be recognized to speak. I am now calling on Maureen Nevin.
That was actually a request I had for the last one, but I would like to say, it's Maureen Nevin, D.O.L.A. Drive, D.O.L.A. Court. I, I would like to say that I agree, and I asked the mayor not to hold this meeting with, with all of these ordinances in a virtual capacity for the reasons that the others have already labored. That's, yeah, that's it. I, I really couldn't understand most of what this ordinance is, is about. I'm still concerned about producing this, this housing with no parking for people in affordable units. I think that's, that's really the antithesis of equality. I'd like to throw that in there. All right, I'll yield my time, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. We're now on to Ernest McNolay. Please keep your comments regarding to 2020-10 only.
Yeah, Ernest McNolay, 400 D.O.L.A. Drive, apartment 5, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'd like to congratulate myself, I think I stick more to the ordinances than a lot of people I hear. So therefore, after congratulating myself, so we're talking about here Springwood Avenue, and you're actually passing an ordinance that has to do with commercial and retail space not having to provide affordable housing? What does that mean? In other words, if somebody builds ground-level stores that above it, if they got a variance or a zoning concession, they built affordable housing above it, which is sort of how things work here, you, you, you present one thing, you get in with retail, and then you say, "Oh, by the way, can we put 60 apartments above, and we're gonna put 20% affordable?" Is that what we're talking about here?
No, we're not. This is very different from that scenario from what you just described.
So then what are we talking about? Making sure that there'll be affordable, commercial condominium spaces?
No, no, not at all.
Affordable retail spaces?
No. Let me tell you what it's about.
Okay.
So right now, the, the, I'm sorry, this is Beth McManus.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Right now, the redevelopment plan requires affordable housing units to be constructed in two ways. One, it requires a 20% affordable housing set-aside applied where residential units are being developed. So as an example, if a developer comes in and they seek to construct 10 units, they may do so, but two of them must be affordable, provided, of course, they meet all other requirements of the plan. That 20% affordable housing requirement applied to residential units, that will remain in place, it is unchanged in this redevelopment plan amendment. The redevelopment plan also currently requires affordable housing to be built at varying ratios based on the non-residential floor area that's being constructed. So for example, if a developer is going to come in and construct, say, a retail store and no residential unit, it would require that, hello?
Yeah, I hear you.
I'm sorry, I thought my headphones were dying. It would require, it would require that the developer construct a retail store and then also build only affordable units in order to meet the affordable housing obligation assigned to that store. That type of an affordable housing obligation, particularly where applied to non-residential uses, has been deemed illegal by the New Jersey Supreme Court. And the, and so those, specifically what was deemed illegal were COA's rules, which specified this type of a non-residential affordable housing set-aside. And so what this redevelopment plan does is it simply eliminates that one component of the affordable housing requirement. If you build residential units in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, this redevelopment plan amendment will require an affordable housing set-aside. If you only build non-residential units in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, you do not have an affordable housing unit requirement. Is that more clear?
Am I muted?
No.
Oh, okay. I figured they'd mute me. So, I, I understand exactly what you're saying now, and I bring back to other comments, and I'll ask you. Many people have said, gee, once, once you pass this, you say, "Well, not to worry, we're gonna do it anyway, and we can always revisit it." Like you can go through, I don't know, where you go through Freehold, you file an appeal, that's fine. But, but one thing you have to realize is consistently here, this public is pretty knowledgeable. And when we keep saying, "Why are you willing to do that here? Give us the opportunity to question and litigate against what you're deciding," and yet you refuse and protect that 2003 waterfront development, which none of us believe was a legal plan. I mean, the people who signed it went to prison. Now why can't we correct that?
Mr. McNolay, can we get back to the Springwood Avenue ordinance that's the topic of this public hearing?
Yeah, I know, I know, and so grammar, and you were involved in those things. I guess you don't want the public to know about that.
The public hearing is on the street, the amendment to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan, please stick to that.
Okay, 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 okay. So now, so now, you're gonna, you're gonna vote to allow someone to build a retail or office building, and if they put apartments on top of it, there'd be no affordable set-aside? Is that right?
No.
No?
This isn't Ms. Alonso, no. This, this is what I mean.
Can you one sentence it for me? Because you know it's hard for me. Just one sentence it. What's the connection between retail building?
I said, no. If you were, if you build.
If you build retail.
If you do residential units, you are required to put in 20% affordable. If you do residential units, if you do a commercial property with no residential units, you don't have an affordable housing obligation.
So we're talking about in this Springwood one, the one we're talking now, this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're looking to do, you mean, that does exist now, meaning if somebody wants to go in?
Correct, it stays the same. It stays the same.
Then what are we voting on?
We're voting to eliminate language that is no longer, longer legal in the state of New Jersey that ties affordable unit to commercial development. It's, it's a cleaning up of this, of the language in the redevelopment plan. Springwood Avenue, it retains 20%.
Oh, I get it, I missed, okay, now I understand. Now I understand, so cleaning up.
All right, thank you.
Are we talking about Asbury Park?
We're talking about Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan.
Yeah, I know, but when you said cleaning up, you confused me, because I don't know too many real estate and zoning and planning.
I'm talking about language, I'm talking about language. I'm just talking about the language in the plan.
I know, I am too. Oh, no, I am too, believe me, I, I didn't think you meant plastic bottles in the curb. I'm talking about the kind of deals that put together with developers in the city. I mean, it's like sleight of hand. Anyway, I'm done. Have a good night, okay.
Whatever, you know.
Okay, we're now moving on to Stuart Lieberman.
Well, my question.
Mr. Lieberman?
Well, no, I, it just takes a bit for me to get unmuted, so I, I have to wait until that happens. My question is this, the, um, thank you. My question is this, the regulations promulgated by COA were found to be illegal in that they required an affordable housing component to commercial development, but there are many instances where municipalities are allowed to enact more stringent requirements than the state does, and since it's Asbury Park's desire to promote affordable housing all throughout the city, apparently, but not in, in the, in the area near the ocean, which I think is really atrocious, but other than that, why have you not looked for another way to reach that result? In other words, maybe it's so that the regulations, that the ordinance that you have in place now might not pass muster, and I'm not sure that's so, because I don't know exactly what the grounds were when the Supreme Court invalidated COA's regulation. But what I want to know is, has the council examined other ways of getting there? Because it seems like this is too fast of a, you know, this is being given up, it's being relinquished too quickly, and I think it's something that's very important. I, I honestly believe that it is Asbury Park's desire to promote low-income and moderate-income housing throughout the city and affordable housing. And so if that's the case, what efforts has council looked at to get there another way?
Mr. Refredo, is this related to the ordinance in question?
I think, I don't know how you could imagine it's not. It's exactly related to the ordinance in question, so that's not, that's not gonna work. The ordinance, the ordinance in question is, is that what you're seeking to do is, is, is limit instances where affordable housing obligations exist, and you say you're doing so quick.
We're, we're removing language that was overturned by law, by the Supreme Court.
No, that's, your language wasn't. Your language wasn't. And so my question is, and please don't say it doesn't have to do with the ordinance squarely or quite, my question is, have you looked at ways of saving your language so that you can, so that those laudable goals can be accomplished?
The language has been overturned by the New Jersey Supreme Court. We're, it's a cleanup item, as Michelle Alonso indicated, we're removing the language that is no longer enforceable because it's been overturned by the New Jersey Supreme Court.
Have you looked at a way of getting there, another way that would pass constitutional muster?
Yes, I did. This is Beth McManus. When I was preparing the housing element and fair share plan, one of the tasks I took upon myself was to review the city's redevelopment plans and other ordinances to identify what existing affordable housing regulations were in place. It was at that time I found the Springwood Avenue provisions, including the residential provision and the non-residential provision. My work for the housing plan that is the foundation for this ordinance as it relates to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan was specifically to determine what portions of these redevelopment, of these affordable housing requirements could be retained in a way that would be legally justifiable, or more simply put, upheld in court, and would be enforceable upon a developer. And it was during that review that I recommended to the planning board, and am now recommending to the council, that they eliminate the non-residential affordable housing requirement. Doing so will make the plan legally, the redevelopment plan that is legally defensible, and will make the affordable housing requirements therein enforceable by the board and by city staff.
All right, well, I, I understand you did that, that's why we have the bill, the ordinance that we're looking at. Did you consider, I mean, you were the expert that was hired by the municipality to try to come up with these plans, what else did you consider? Did you look for anything else that would accomplish the same laudable result, which is something that is good, something that Asbury Park promotes, and get there another way? What else did you tell the board they could do, other than, it's easy to say, "Just strike it." I mean, that's easy, I hope they didn't pay a lot for that, but what else did you come up with? What else did you propose?
Well, there is no alternative, non-residential affordable housing requirement, so there is no alternative proposal. So, there is no alternative proposal. So, instead, what we focused on were those provisions that could be enforced, that is, the residential set aside. And we also specified that any non-residential developer will indeed be required to pay a non-residential development fee. So that that's clear, so that folks understand that there is also that obligation required of non-residential developers. That is a minor change. I would deem that a minor change to the ordinance. But that remains in place, that remains enforceable. And in addition to that, part of the task was meeting the city's general affordable housing goals. And my recommendation for that was, we need to look elsewhere besides simply Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, where you have these existing requirements in place. And so that is one of the reasons why you see multiple ordinances on the council's agenda this evening.
What is, is that fee part of 2020-10?
Yes.
And what is the fee and how is it that you arrived at it?
It is a statewide non-residential development fee. I do not arrive at it. Instead, it is a statutorily required item. It is not something that the city has discretion in. It must collect the non-residential development fee and it amounts to 2.5% of the equated test value of new non-residential development that occurs. The redevelopment plan amendment does not newly apply the non-residential development fee. It just simply highlights that it is a requirement imposed upon development in this area.
If you didn't put it in there, the requirement would exist nonetheless, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So, why'd you put it in there?
To highlight the fact that it is there when folks actually, not yourself, but folks ask similar questions to what you're asking this evening. And it was one way to highlight that just because that affordable housing requirement has been eliminated, we wanted to highlight the fact that it doesn't mean that all requirements are eliminated for non-residential developers. So, it's simply an effort to highlight a state statute rather than to apply something new.
Right, I think Ms. McManus has answered your questions.
Well, in this format, the way we're doing this, we're really constrained by the way we communicate with each other. But at this point, that's fine. Look, I know that all of these are gonna be voted on tonight. That is quite clear. We can see what's happening. Everybody can see what's happening. So, go ahead.
Are you finished, Mr. Lieberman? Okay, I'm now moving on to 3919. Please state your name and address for the record. And please keep your comments only regarding the public hearing that is being presented.
Good evening. My name is Maria Passanati, but I believe my comments are relevant to the next ordinance, 2020-11. Do you want to hold off until then?
Yes, please, Marie.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to close the public hearing on 2020-10.
Jesse Kendall, move it.
Eileen Chapman, second. Okay, we're now moving on to the roll call. All in favor to close the public hearing on 2020-10?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing on 2020-10 is closed. Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-10?
Move to adopt, Amy Quinn. Second, Avon Clayton.
Now, the roll call. Councilmember Chapman? Yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2020-10 adopted. We are now moving on to the public hearing for 2020-11. An ordinance amending the land development regulations of the city of Asbury Park to amend Article 6, Zoning Section 30-70.6, R3, Medium Density, Multi-Family Residential Zone, and to create a New Deal Lake Drive Inclusionary Housing Overlay District, consistent and designed to officiate the city's adopted 2019 Third Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I will now ask that someone please give a brief overview on ordinance 2020-11.
I can provide that, and this is Beth McManus for the record. This is an overlay district. And the first thing I want folks to understand is that this creates a zoning option for developers and for property owners. It does not require that any, that any existing buildings be redeveloped. It does not require that this zoning be utilized. Instead, it becomes an additional layer, if you will, of zoning that remains, that is an option to a developer. A developer may utilize the existing zoning, which is essentially unchanged, or they may now utilize this overlay zoning to create a different type of development, which I'll explain in just a moment. But I want to be clear that the underlying zoning remains in place. This is just an additional option that may be utilized. The overlay zone applies to the R3 district of the city that is located between, that has frontage on Deal Lake Drive and is located between Emery and Webb. But again, all these properties have frontage on Deal Lake Drive and they're in the R3 district. The zoning creates this overlay district and it allows for multifamily housing, provided that multifamily housing has a 20% set aside of low and moderate income housing. It also creates alternative, or rather, new standards that must be met if you're utilizing this overlay zoning. The standards include things such as building height, setbacks, density, design standards, and so forth. Some of the more pertinent items are minimum lot size. Are those lot sizes existing today? You may not subdivide a piece of an existing property pursuant to this overlay zone in order to increase density on a smaller site. It also increases the maximum density to 60 units an acre. And I should say that's an increase from 50 units an acre that's currently permitted. It also increases the maximum building height from a total of 60 feet to 90 feet, or I should say, five stories and 60 feet, or to eight stories and 90 feet. So, it increases that density and maximum building height. It also includes a number of requirements for building design that are intended to ensure nicer-looking buildings, some minimum standards that the planning board or zoning board may judge a development application. It also includes a few other standards that I think folks are interested in based on some of the comments we've heard this evening. One, it requires that parking be provided pursuant to the city's existing parking standards, with the exception that parking is not required for low, moderate, and middle-income housing units. And then, speaking of middle income, if you recall, I said early on, this ordinance requires a 20% set aside of affordable or of low and moderate income housing. It also permits an additional density of five units per acre, where 8% or more units are reserved for middle-income housing. And so what this does is it allows the developer to increase their density from 60 to 65 units an acre. If they also, in addition to providing 20% low and moderate income housing, also provide 8% of middle-income housing. And so there's an additional built-in incentive to generate some middle-income housing in this area. And so that's an overview. We have overlay zoning, which creates this option. It provides increased density for developers that choose to use the overlay zoning. And in exchange for getting that increase in density, developers are required to provide 20% low and moderate income housing. There's an additional density incentive for middle-income housing. And it also relaxes parking requirements specific to the low and moderate income housing units. They are not required to provide parking. And so with that, that's a brief overview.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2020-11? Move to open, Eileen Chapman? Second?
Second, Amy Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? The public hearing is now open on 2020-11. When called upon, you will be unmuted to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments and questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. I'm now calling upon Maria.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you, thank everyone for your efforts during these extraordinarily difficult times. And I am Maria Passanati, and I am a resident owner at 510 Deal Lake Drive, 3E, Block 3703, Lot 515.15. I am smack in the middle of this overlay, which gives, and to me, well, the overlay now gives a right to these developers to build a maximum of 90 feet in an apartment building. Where are we gonna put this? Okay, that's my first question. My second question is, does this also set up the scenario where a developer will come in and request a 12-story building? Because they'll say, well, look at 510 Deal Lake Drive. It's contextual, and I want 12 stories. Because the overlays are right. It's not discretionary, as long as they comply with the 20%. Someone help me with this?
So, I don't think that this ordinance sets up any developer for asking 12 stories. Quite frankly, they could, even if, before this ordinance was passed or today, a developer could request 12 stories, or 15 stories, or 50 stories, if they're so inclined. There's no ordinance that can prevent a developer from asking. I don't, and so I don't think that this ordinance is going to be legitimately used in order to generate higher building heights than what is currently permitted today or what could be permitted through this ordinance. And this is Beth McManus. I'm sorry, I always forget to identify myself.
Thank you, Beth. Well, I mean, currently, the Deal Lake Drive, this is a small area now where you're putting, installing this overlay. It already has residential towers. It already has multiple dwellings. And this will, and I'm opposed to this, as this will just, it's premature and it will have a negative impact on the quality of life here. I don't have to tell everyone what we go through every summer. And while, again, it's laudable that you want to keep all of us in Asbury and not be priced out, but there are other ways where developers can be forced to give back to the communities. When all these luxury developers come forward with their wish lists, that's the time when to nail them down to commitments to community housing and affordable housing. And there have been a lot of lost opportunities, I believe. And Deal Lake Drive is really gonna suffer from this. But thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you hearing my perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to Gregory Schnack.
Gregory Schnack, 315 Eighth Avenue. You know, my feeling on this is there should be no waiver on the parking. You know, there is, you know, as Amy brought up, there's parking issues. There's the opportunity here to build buildings that go from five stories, changing the ordinance to eight stories. That's a 60% increase. And 20% of that doesn't require parking. You know, so, I completely disagree with the waiver on the parking. You know, in addition to that, on the phone today, every time the phone line's been opened to the public, I have not heard one person from the public in agreement with any of these ordinances that you're adopting. Not one single person from the public has been in agreement. Yet, you've proceeded to adopt the previous ordinances, and I'm sure this one's going through too. And I just really feel as though, you know, we're being steamrolled. You know, we're the public, and the public is saying, we, you know, we want to postpone this. We're not even saying no. We're saying, we want to postpone this from a virtual forum until it can be discussed openly and more intelligibly with adequate visuals and the information that's required. And every single person who has spoken from the public side has, we've all been ignored. And, yeah, you know, to the other people who participated from the public, Mr. McNolley, Mr. Lieberman, Amy, you know, my hand is up if you guys want to retain counsel and litigate this because we're just being steamrolled here. Everything is just going through despite the fact that every single person from the public has said, you know, hold off on doing this, or had objections to what you're doing. And, you know, who are you guys answering to? Because you're clearly not answering to the public. Yeah, it just seems like, you know, you know, are you working for the public or are you working for the developers? Yeah, it just blows my mind that we're calling this an inclusionary zone. Yet, it's segregation. You've excluded inclusionary zone from the waterfront, and you're pushing it onto the people. You know, I'm not on Deal Lake Road, but you're pushing it onto the people on Deal Lake Road. You're saying that the low-income housing people can be over here. You're picking the winners and losers. Inclusionary, inclusionary housing, to me, should be distributed uniformly across and throughout Asbury Park. I don't, I don't understand the concept of inclusionary zone. If you're putting it over here on the end of Asbury Park, almost out of town, away from the waterfront, how is that an inclusionary zone? You know, why isn't it closer, closer to the middle of Asbury, closer to the business district? Why is it shoved off to the end, away from, you know, away from Cookman Avenue and away from the waterfront? You know, again, we're talking inclusionary. So, how do you have, you know, inclusionary can be over there. It makes no sense. And it's not inclusionary. To me, it's very regulatory. So, you know, I just feel like every single person who's been on this call from the public has been objecting to what you're doing, and you continue to do it without pausing or delaying it or postponing it until we can all be together in an open forum and not a virtual meeting. And I maintain that you're opening yourself up for litigation, and I, for one, will be part of it. I yield.
Thank you. We are now moving on to Amy O'Rourke. Amy, please keep your comments and questions about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing.
Yes, this is Michael O'Rourke. I'm Amy O'Rourke's husband. I live on Deal Lake Drive, I mean, I live on Webb Avenue, Webb Street, and right on, next to the exclusionary zone. From what I can gather, you're talking about an increase in density allowed if they do the, they provide the set aside housing for low and moderate. Is that accurate? You're putting more units in?
Yes.
So, is Asbury right now under a mandate, under the Mount Laurel decision, to provide additional housing in town?
The city, as an urban ag municipality, the city does not. I think the answer to the question is generally no. We are not looking to create this overlay district in order to meet a new construction obligation, such as the third round obligation.
Right. I mean, I do zoning work, so you're not under, you're not under any, there's no builders remedies involved. remedies involved here. This is something that we're doing voluntarily, this is not something that is mandated by the state.
Correct. There is no, yeah, we are not responding to a builder's remedy litigation, to a court order.
So, we're basically, you're asking us to say, "We have a major parking problem in this town. This street, that you're talking about, along Deal Lake Drive, has got massive buildings, like the Santander, that is a very large building with no parking available, and there are no vacant lots along this. So I question the veracity of putting this type of an ordinance in here when there's no immediate need for it, there's no builder's remedy being threatened. The town has a very, I mean, I think the town is doing a very good job of providing low and moderate income housing, but it also has a major parking problem, and yet we're increasing densities, providing no additional parking, when we don't really need to do that. I haven't heard the argument as to why this is a good idea. Is there some, am I missing something here?
The city selected locations throughout the city, this is certainly not the only one, as evidenced by the number of ordinances on the council's agenda, the city selected locations throughout the city that it felt could accommodate increased density and the affordable housing set aside.
Well, I mean, that's fine if you're going to do it, but I mean, there's a lot of vacant land in town. I just don't see this as a, it doesn't seem to me like this is really good planning. This just seems to be something that is convenient. And, second of all, you're doing something that is not mandated by the state, and we've, which means that we're already providing, as a community, we're already providing an adequate amount of low and moderate income housing, and I have no problem with what we're doing.
No, that's not what that, hold on, I want to be clear, that's not what that means. This is not a situation where a municipality has been assigned an affordable housing obligation, it has met that obligation, and it is exceeding it. This is a different scenario. Asbury Park is an urban aid municipality. It is not assigned an affordable housing obligation. That is not reflective of the city's current ability to fulfill the need of affordable housing by residents in the city or in the larger region. That is simply not what an urban aid municipality's designation means in this context.
Understood. However, this, you have not made the case that this is a necessary move, that this is, that this is, I mean, this is something that if you're going to do it, should be put on a, this should be voted off, this should be a resolution, this should, you know, that's why we vote in town. That's why you put something up there so that people can say, "This is what we're thinking of doing. We have a series of ordinances here." So that people can actually read it, it can be published, and it can be voted on, not done, because I don't see, I don't see your point here. This looks like this is something that's just being done, and I'm a developer, I've seen developers before, this just looks like we're putting, you know, it's the old, we're going to put more density into an already very dense area, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, I don't think you've really made the case.
If I can just interject by way of clarification, and this is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. A land use and zoning ordinance cannot by law be put out to a public vote.
Well, you can put something out, you can put something out there to the residents to see what the feedback is, but I don't think you've really gotten any feedback. And a lot of people are, like, upset by the fact that this is just being done, because not a lot of people are paying attention. You know, you can put something out there for opinion, you can put it out there, you know, for public comment, and I don't see that really happening here. Because this, I know this street, this street is intensely developed, and way undersized, and way underserved in parking, and to put this in here just so that somebody can put in, I mean, there's tons of places in town where you can put additional housing in and give builder-type remedies for, I got no problem building, you know, allowing somebody to put a couple more units in, but you don't waive the parking requirement just because you can. It's not, it just doesn't make good sense.
It's our quality of life, too.
You have the right to set this up, especially 2000, at this one particularly, because you know what the area looks like, and it is way underserved in parking, and to put, to allow a future situation to develop, and really, nobody has said, "Oh, we're going to build a parking garage down on Main Street, where people are going to overflow parking, it's going to be able to put in." The place is a zoo in the summertime. And to allow for something in the future when we don't have to do it, to just do it because it sounds like a good idea, doesn't sound like a very good idea. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. I'm now moving on to Elaine. Elaine, please state your name and address for the record, and your comments and questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. Elaine?
Sorry, one second, Melody.
Sure.
Doesn't look like she's on audio, actually.
Okay. Do you want me to move on to someone else?
Yeah, I'll send her a message asking her.
Okay, okay. We're now on to Maureen. Maureen?
Yep.
Maureen Nevin?
Okay. Yeah, I'm here, Melody. Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Drive, Deal Lake Court. Okay, maybe, I, too, I'm just at a loss to understand why this has been added, this overlay has been added to the plan. So I'm on the same page with Mr. O'Rourke, who I think maybe that couple actually looked at my house while it was on the market. You know, everyone has to look at this. I was, several couples were concerned about what was going to be built. Could someone actually tear down this Garden Apartment Complex, Number 300, Deal Lake Drive, next door to me? And so I render the ocean view just completely, you know, blocked. And it was a consideration that they told me, quite frankly, one couple, that otherwise they would have bought my house. So I can't live with this, this gray area, I mean, this big cliff. I need to know what this ordinance is going to allow people to do, developers to do, on Deal Lake Drive, in plain English. And I, I just, let me throw this out about the middle income, because if you look at what the middle income apartments, the rents are for that, those prices are basically what people are struggling to pay for now. So, and we haven't talked about the builders' incentives, if they do provide, I don't know why that discussion hasn't come up. The builders are supposed, if they provide affordable housing, five units out of 50, say, they can get extra floors. So, I need, I need some answers, and I'm sure I'm not alone on this, as to what you can actually, what you're allowing developers to do. I mean, certainly, if they want to come in and offer to buy the condos next door, that apartment complex has been completely condoized, it would take nothing for a developer to go up to, and I'm sure people have been hinting that they would like to know if there's a developer in the waiting, waiting for this to go through. Because they would talk, I imagine, they would deal directly with the homeowners association, and make an offer to all the owners through the association, and boom, that garden complex is coming down, and everybody, because the setbacks are so minimal, it is much less than what the, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the sidewalk to when they could, where they could actually build the building is only 10 feet, and I think that is about probably half to two-thirds more property than we have now, so that the car, the view corridor is going to be blocked. From, if someone were to build a building according to those setbacks next door here, I think it would affect everybody to the west. And certainly, you know, just ruin that majestic view corridor. And in exchange for what? Five units that could be actually not even affordable, even at affordable rates? You know, is this, is this what's going to happen to my home? Is this what this ordinance will allow to happen? In other words, am I looking at, you know, just taking the beauty right out of the house that I've been living in? And my neighbors? You know, there's five of us on one side and five on the other. So, and people across the lake are going to be affected as well. I don't want to see Long Branch, where you don't even know there's an ocean there. This isn't what we bought our homes for. But that's my question. You know, I could go into all of these, you know.
So, this is Beth McManus.
But I would, I like, I would want the answer to this, please.
Okay. This is Beth McManus. Let me give you a little bit of information to help answer your question. So, one of the things you asked for was, in plain language, what exactly can be built in this area? And I think you're sort of alluding to, how does that compare to what's currently permitted? So, what this overlay zoning permits is a maximum density of 60 residential units per acre, and a maximum building height of eight stories. That should be compared to the current zoning, which permits 60, excuse me, 50 units an acre, and five stories or 60 feet. So, just for comparison, we're looking at from, say, from five stories to eight stories as the difference in height. But in terms of some of the other, and I, and yes, it does require 20% set aside, I don't want to dismiss that. Some of the other requirements that I think you might find interesting is the minimum front yard setback, that is 30 feet, and that is the same as the current front yard setback permitted in the district. It also has a rear yard setback, setback to the rear property line, that's 30 feet, and that is unchanged from today. So that's also currently the existing setback. So while the building height and the density has gone up, some of the setbacks remain, those two setbacks remain the same. So let me, let me just stop there. That's the most basic aspect of that which can be permitted, and how it compares to what the currently, current zoning states.
So, to compare it to the current, the front yard setback would be the same as what is there now with the apartment?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what the existing, so that's, that's a different question. So I don't know what the existing setback is with the apartment, but I will say the permitted front yard setback for just general development in the zone is 30 feet, for the front yard. And the other thing I want to be clear about is-
And that's what it was before, you're saying, that's what it was before?
Yeah, that's the, yep, if you were going to, if you were going to tear down a building now in the R3 district in this area, and simply construct a new residential building consistent with the existing zoning, you could do so at 30 feet, at 30 feet from the front yard. And the other thing I want to be clear about is, the garden apartments in this area, they can be torn down today and rebuilt, bigger than what they are currently. Now, they can be rebuilt-
And higher.
At only five stories. Yes, higher, yes, bigger and higher. And they, today it can only go to five stories, and the ordinance would permit it to go to eight stories, so I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that's not a significant change, but I want to make sure everybody understands, that's, that's, yes, it is. But I want to make sure everybody understands that those units can be torn down today, regardless of this ordinance.
Let me ask you a question about that, though, because it's always been my expectation that if something like that was proposed, that, you know, when you get that notice, that everyone had to get a certified letter and be informed of what they want to do, the neighbors get together and they say, "No, we're not going to allow you to build something that is going to block our views," and you would end up in court. Now, is that still an avenue open to us, or would this take some sort of precedent over everything else? I mean, I'm talking about this new plan, this ordinance.
In terms of litig, I mean, in terms of litigation over views of surrounding area, I mean, the-
Yeah.
There's nothing, there's nothing that can stop anybody from suing somebody. So, you could, you or anybody could sue a neighbor for blocking your views today, just like you could do so tomorrow if this ordinance is adopted. I mean, whether or not you'd be successful, is, you know, that's a, that's a very different question, that's going to depend on, you know, a variety of legal issues, but just the, the starting of litigation is the same.
But, but would we still have the planning board to appeal to?
So, one of the, so, this ordinance change would still require any developer that were going to come in and use the overlay zoning, they would still be required to go in and get planning board approval. That planning board approval would still be required to be noticed to folks within 200 feet. So none of that has changed. The procedure for a developer getting an approval has not changed, the avenue, the option for residents that want to provide input or are displeased with the decision has not changed. It just simply changes the standards that a developer must meet if they want to have a conforming application.
All right, I think that answers my question.
Thank you, Maureen. And we are now moving on to Elaine. Elaine, please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Hi, this is Elaine Lapany. I'm at 301 Eighth in Asbury, Unit 4. And the reason why I came on to this call tonight really is for clarification, because I received a certified letter in the mail about the R3 on Deal Lake Drive. And I have a lot more clarification after the four hours that I've been listening. So I guess, after listening to all of this, I guess I have just a few more questions left. I understand that what this does will increase density in an area, in where we are, this overlay. I'm not sure you're aware, but this is already in a very dense area. As people have mentioned on and on, there are a lot of multiple dwellings without any parking available, other than the permit parking. Secondly, most of those properties, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, along Deal Lake Drive, from Webb down Pakt, Grand, the tall tower, why, I don't know, I'm on so long, I can't think of the name of it, the big ones, the 12-story, they're all owner occupied, they have all been converted to condos. So I guess my question is, if and when you're talking about developers, like, you know, to come in and build things that are higher, where are we talking? I know the Deal Lake Gardens are pretty much mostly owner occupied at this point, you know, past the Santander, I'm sorry, that was the name I was looking for. So, if they're already owner occupied- Um, so if they're already owner occupied, where are we talking about? When somebody said, oh, they're just going to put these, you know, the, the low income, moderate, moderate incomes on the end of town, it's not just the end of town. It's, it's on Deal Lake, which is, you know, quite a beautiful spot. Uh, so they didn't just, you know, say, oh, let's just, you know, put it on the end of town. That's not just the end of town. Um, so how did you determine, uh, what areas can be, become these high density zones? And as you know, Mike Manzella, I mean, I know I write to you constantly about the parking and you're always tweaking it year to year and we do appreciate it, um, in the area. As I said, I'm on Eighth Ave. If you go right now on the weekend and try to find a spot on Webb and Eighth, you probably can't because everybody is home, especially within this pandemic. Never mind the, the summer months. I mean, there's just not, you know, it's, it's a matter of mathematics. So to say that people in moderate and lower income don't have cars is absurd. Um, plus each of these units, even if you're given a parking space, you're given one. There's a lot of people that have two in the home with two cars. So I guess the biggest prob- my biggest question is, how did they decide that this area can be more, you know, have a lot more density? And as we've mentioned, there are empty lots, there's different stocks in town where we can put some of these other, um, you know, other properties. So I know I asked a lot of questions, but, um, those are my concerns and questions.
This is Beth McManus again. So there's no particular, there's no particular property being identified by the city or by the planning board for, for the rezoning. We've identified an area generally, but there's no specific property that this is centered around. So let me be clear about that. Um, in terms of conversion of any condo development, that's a matter between the property, the, the landowner and the individual condo owners. This overlay zoning simply creates an option should, in that scenario, the, uh, the various parties decide to come together, uh, and sell the property for the, or otherwise, uh, pursue redevelopment of the site, um, to utilize the overlay zoning. And, and in terms of why Deal Lake Drive was selected, just generally speaking, and this goes back actually not to, uh, not to simply the start of this ordinance, but actually back to the housing element and fair share plan. This area of Asbury Park was thought to be appropriate for increased heights. And so, and you can see some, some positive examples, uh, of existing tall buildings along Deal Lake, along and in proximity to, uh, to Deal Lake Drive in this R3 district. And so that's why the, the overlay zone was applied to this portion of the R3 area. This, this is an area was thought to be appropriate for increased height and density. Uh, and so that's, that's how the recommendation began in the housing plan and why we're here today with the associated ordinance.
Okay. Um, I, I do understand that and it does make sense because there are a lot of, um, you know, tall buildings along that area. But I don't know if anybody really, and I think Mike Manzella knows this, because I'm sure he's gone to multiple calls about this, that particular area with parking. You know, you have, uh, the Miramar, no parking. In front of the Miramar, east of that, you have another apartment, um, complex. I'm not sure of the, you know, what the name of it is. They have no parking. I am in a, uh, in a house on, on Eighth Avenue, 301 Eighth. There are five families in there, two in the carriage house behind us with no driveway. So that's seven families. Some of us have one car, some of us have two cars. That's right on that corner. And we could go down the line on Eighth Avenue. I just think that in thinking about this, I talk about the, you know, we talk about the quality and how we're, we're, you know, the quality of life for everyone, for our low income, for our moderate income, and also for the people that live there. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's an issue. And we have no problem with that. I mean, at least I'm going to speak for myself with doing this. But to not provide parking, to go along with it, I mean, I just think that's ludicrous. I mean, we're just going to come to a standstill. And to, to support some of the other people, Mr. Lieberman, Mr. Stuckey, um, some of the other people that spoke, Mr. Schenk, um, I really think that this is such a huge, um, this is such huge ordinance and really such an important piece that, um, I, I understand legally, we can do this virtually.
Right, we're bringing my neighbors to it.
If we're really talking about, um, you know, about the concern about all of us, the whole town, everybody, whatever level we're at, if, if, you know, if you really can think about us as people, if we can move this even in two months from now, where we can have more of a face-to-face, you know, um, some more, um, pictures or, you know, descriptions of what this might look like, I think we'd all appreciate it. I want to thank you all for your time and I want to thank you for, you know, for, uh, your concern and putting this out to us. But, um, I think it would be, be really great if we can move this, you know, at least so we can pass some of this, perhaps in two months. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Elaine. We're now moving on to call-in user two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, my name is Samer Squire and I do live in, uh, 1700 Webb Street, which is Miramar. My main concern is, uh, forget about like housing, like for medium and low income people. But the thing is, increase from five to eight stories is humongous. Densely populated as is, as we all know, parking is a huge problem. And everybody who knows me knows that I love Asbury Park. I love where I live. I've been in this area since mid-nights. I've seen it going up and down, down, down and up again. And, uh, I really would like to know, what can we do? And how can we prevent of this going forward with allowing eight stories? I have no problem with being lower income if we can maintain the lower density of this area because it's already overpopulated. Anybody hearing me there?
This is Beth McManus, I hear you. I'm not sure I have a, an answer to your question.
So can we, how can we get to the answer to my question? Do we need more time? Do we need more people involved? Do we, what, what can we do to stop this from going forward? Till we have answers to questions like this? Because obviously, the biggest problem here is the parking. And she, high, high, high density. People who already live here and then people who are coming for the summer.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Mr. Squire?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're now moving on to Ernest McNolli. Please keep your comments regarding the ordinance being presented.
Are you saying that to me, to keep my comments related to the ordinance?
To you and everyone else, yes, to the ordinance being presented, yes.
I know, but you don't apply it to everyone else. And when everyone else strays off, they go off. And when I do, you say, he's out of order. Shut him up, mute him. You know, I can't believe everybody is asking for answers. This last gentleman, what an articulate, wonderful man. He's asking for questions and there's no answer. I mean, I think the only reason this is going on till after 11 o'clock? Because every person on this thing is probably at home. But could this take place if this was in the council chambers till after 11? We're not even half finished. I mean, Mr. Fredo, I, I, sometimes I wonder, you're the city attorney. Sometimes I wonder if you're the developer attorney, because you know what? Citizens come in here and, you know, we have to watch you go to parties with developers.
Mr., 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 Mr.
Your comments to the ordinance question, Mr. McNolli.
It is, okay, let me be specific, okay? I think what we're talk- I think what we're talking about here is a developer named Peter Siegel, who owns, who's buying the Smith Brothers' properties. He's painting the octopuses on the building, but I don't think he's buying them for that reason. I think he's buying them because of what you're doing here. Because he knows that you could tear these things down and we're talking about-
No, no, there's some people walking in and out. Maybe like, um, there's really no lights on.
Yeah, what's going, why are you muting me?
You're not muted.
Yeah, I was just muted. They just said I'm unmuted. Did I waste all my speech?
No, it was-
Okay, anyway, all right, let me continue, okay? Let me continue. So, so I know the developers in my area very well, okay? You, you know, you have Sacman at the Kingsley, you have Siegel Enterprises, whatever, at 406 and 1706 and Miramar and all these other things. So look, for you, for you all to say that this is just in case someone in the future comes along, is really disingenuous to the public. You, you, you know what's going on here. All these properties were bought on spec to be torn down and then come and say, look, let us put up eight stories. Okay, and then, you know, just like the Ocean, uh, Club, you know, let us go from 12 to 17 and we'll leave the Cove alone. Then you get 17 and now they're going to build on the Cove. So what I'm saying is, in this thing that you're talking about, I think what you're talking about is from near the Kingsley Arms, all along Deal Lake Drive, past Park, all the way past Deal Lake Towers, even to that little two-story complex there. Am I correct? Now, look, I don't, either everyone's asleep or I have too much energy for this debate. Mr. Fredo, you there?
I'm here, Mr. McNolli.
Okay, Mr. Fredo, I know you know Asbury like the back of your hand. You, you know, when I talk about, uh, the western end of Deal Lake Drive, just when the houses stop and those little apartments are on the corner, what are they? Two-story? You know the ones I mean, on the corner? No, like you don't know now.
Questions, please? Can you tell me what this has to do with the ordinance that's before the council?
Are you kidding me? Are we, wait a minute. Give me an idea of where we're talking about on Deal Lake Drive and then you ask me that question again. I'm trying to clarify, are we talking about from, from Deal Lake Towers to, to Webb, to whatever that is now, down by the Kingsley Arms? And, uh, what are those two-story, uh, condominiums there? And the ones that Siegel owns, the other ones next to the Sandtender, those two-story? Because I hear a lot about, we're going to tear them down and put up high rises. And there's a lot of us who know exactly what the plan is here. I mean, I, I'm here since 2007. And if you can't be honest with the public and say, look, here's what's going on, Mr. McNolli. We want to tear down these two-story old things, buy them out, let the developers buy them out and let's put up high rises. And the heck with parking, but look at the revenue. Is that what we're talking about, Mr. Fredo? I'm not stupid and you know that. And I don't know why in public you won't just give me an answer.
Mr. McNolli-
Because you're just saying it, what?
Mr. Mc, questions about-
Okay, all right, Mr. Moore, I'm asking you, all right, Mayor Moore, let me ask you. Are we talking about the Deal Lake Garden? Does this encompass-
Respectfully, if, if Mr. McNolli is looking to ascertain the specific area of Deal Lake Drive that the ordinance pertains to, then perhaps respectfully, if I could ask one of my colleagues on this call, either Michelle or Beth, who might be able to provide a little bit more geographic detail as to the area that's involved with the-
I, I, I appreciate it, but I don't, I don't want to get into a survey, just quickly. Where is it from?
No, I'm making reference by street because I, I'm not buying the, the, how a building looks. So this is the R3 district that runs the Deal Lake Drive from Emory Street to Webb Street.
So what I'm, what I'm asking you is, what low-level condominium, apartments or buildings, the old complexes, does this include? In other words, for the public, you know, tell us the buildings that could be demolished, bought out by a developer, demolish the two-story garden condos or rentals, whatever they are, and be replaced with eight-story high rises? That's all I'm asking. Where, where's the first one?
I, I can't make that type of reference by-
Okay, okay.
This is an overlay for the R3.
All right, then let me try and help you. You know where the Miramar is, right? Hello?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Good. You know what's north of the Miramar, those vacant lots? I, I feel like I'm talking to a-
I cannot do, I can, because, Mr. McNolli, I cannot do reference by, by that. But you know what's next to it.
Well, let me ask you, have you ever been on Deal Lake Drive?
Mr. McNolli, of course, I have.
Oh, who am I talking to now?
This is, this is Ms. Alonso, the Director of Planning and Redevelopment.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Alonso. So just let me ask you, north of, uh, are we talking about that vacant lot now?
That we're talking about zoning for the area of the city. And we're not talking about conversion of individual buildings.
Listen, I don't want to talk in zoning speak or legal speak.
Ms. McNolli, I believe, Ms. McNolli, I believe she answered your question.
What was the answer?
The R3 zone along Deal Lake Drive is the district.
So all those low-level, two-story brick, existing buildings, whether they're condos or rental, according to what, what you're doing tonight, would mean that if a developer wants to come in and buy, or the developer that owns them, which I think that's what this is about, by the way, that you tear them down and if you vote yes tonight, they can come and apply to put up a high-density, eighth-floor high-rise. And the heck with quality of life, the heck with view, the heck with public disagreement, it's going through anyway because developers rule in Asbury. Is that what we're talking about? And I could give you names. And I don't like the fact that these developers get to go in all these meetings and parties and break the sunshine law and make these deals. It's horrible. I sat at the recreation committee in the, in the Asbury Hotel with all the, with all the develop-
I'm going to cut you off. Questions, not statements and not stupid statements, in my humble opinion.
You were at that meeting too and you violate a lot of the sunshine with these deals.
I, I am going to-
These deals that are made in Boston.
If, if you're going to have a question, please ask the question. If you're going to make statements, irresponsible statements, I'm going to say you're out of order and I'm going to say you're done. So please ask questions.
You know, Mayor, this is as nice as you've ever been to me. You never give me second chances. All right, so, so now, uh, are there? Uh, let me, let me ask you point and blank. Has Developer Siegel approached anyone in the city with the desire to tear down all these low-rises he's buying, the ones where he paints the octopus all over them? If he planned to put up high-rises there, is that why we're here?
There's been no application filed.
Oh, no, I don't mean, I mean a pre, how about a pre-app, a pre-application violation of the sunshine law? Demonstration of what they want to do? No? No one's met with Developer Siegel about anything on Deal Lake Drive? Okay, I'm okay with that.
And that is, actually, that is irrelevant to the zoning.
Well, wait a minute, you said no first, so you answered the question?
Yes, but I, I did answer the question, but do you have any other questions relevant to the zoning?
It is, that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about the area on Deal Lake Drive, on, uh, uh, from the areas that you mentioned and most of the- and most of the things that I believe. I mean, you're not gonna tear down the sand tender, you're not gonna tear down, uh, uh, Kingsley two hundred, where Sacman just put in a couple of million dollars. What you're gonna do is look to tear down all those low-rises. Now, the main ones, the Smith Brothers still own them, what he hasn't sold to Siegel. Siegel's bought seventeen oh six, four oh six, everything around us on Eighth, all those gray buildings with birds and octopus, and that's probably-
Mr. McNolay, these, these are, these are all suppositions on your part. They do not relate to the ordinance before the council.
Yeah, I know, I know. Listen, you know, Mr. Fredo, you know, this is a recorded meeting. Are you gonna tell me-
I understand that.
I know, but are you gonna tell me that you don't know who owns all those buildings with octopus and birds all over them, and they're a developer?
That's irrelevant.
No, it isn't, it's very relevant. You know, this is a meeting that's for the developers, certainly not for the residents.
Again, Mr. McNolay- Statements, questions, please.
Can you put this off, Mayor?
Can, do you have questions, sir?
Yeah, why would you consider allowing them to increase the height? That's the main thing. Forget the, well, they're all main things, but the height, eight-story? Are you, are you saying this was approved by the planning already?
It's already been before the planning board, Mr. McNolay. The planning board recommended the ordinance to the council. Now, it, you're, you're repeating things, and you're really not making any more constructive arguments. I think the mayor and council's heard everything that you've had to say.
I'm not making any, I'm not making any arguments, I'm talking facts. So, you can cut me off if you want, but remember, the public's listening. And this is like a, this is like a bait and switch. But take this recording and bring it right to Freehold. You can deny what you want, but the facts are the facts. Some of us live here, Mr. Fredo, and have a vested interest, and have a lot of money invested in our homes. I don't know where you live, but I know you don't live in Asbury.
Mr. McNolay, I'm gonna ask you to ask a question, or else I am gonna say, I'm gonna say-
Do me a favor, Mayor, do me a favor. Can you answer me a question, Mr. Mayor, please? I promise it'll be the last one. Please? Just a yes or no, how's that? Would you put this off on the Deer Lake Drive then, to a better time?
At this point, no.
Okay.
Ask questions, though.
That's an answer, I'm done, that's an ans-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're now moving on to Mr. Lieberman. Please keep your comments or questions about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Thank you very much, uh, Stuart Lieberman, Deer Lake Drive. I would ask that the council and the mayor have the decency, that they demonstrate basic, fundamental decency, and that they not vote on something as absolutely significant and presidential as this at eleven fifteen at night. This is really outrageous. The way this meeting went was absurd. People were asking questions, complete silence in terms of a response. This has been absolutely ridiculous. And my first question is regarding this audit, it's, I would ask that this council, that somebody has courage on this council, and says, "You know what, we're gonna put this off so that we can have a fair meeting rather than railroading this." Because it sure looks to the public as if this was a done deal, and that all of you went into this meeting with an understanding of exactly what you were gonna do. And it's not fair, it's extremely important. So, I ask that you have decency tonight, and that you, you show the strength and the courage that you're gonna put this off so that people have an opportunity to have a real meeting, where we could look at you, where we could get answers, instead of this charade, which really does not substitute for an important meeting on a subject of this magnitude and substance. Are you going to do that? Will anybody support this at all, or is everybody going to just be quiet? I expected that. The next question I would, and note the record should reflect, there was not one response to that request. The next thing I ask is, Betsy, let me ask you a question. Um, I need to understand this. Is the, do, in order to satisfy the city's third-round housing element and fair share plan, do you depend, does Asbury Park depend on any affordable housing units coming from this new zone, from this overlay zone?
I'm sorry, I thought my phone was muted. My name is Beth McManus. The city does not have a new construction affordable housing obligation that it must meet. These ordinances are intended to effectuate the adopted housing element and fair share plan.
Does that fair chan- fair share plan require, in order to be satisfied, um, the, the creation of any affordable housing units in this overlay zone?
It's- The city, I, I don't know how else to say this. The city does not have a new construction obligation, which this ordinance will meet, notwithstanding the housing element and fair share plan recommends a variety of zoning ordinance amendments intended to create affordable housing in the city, because that is a goal that the city has adopted in various planning documents, notwithstanding its lack of a new construction obligation.
The reason I'm asking that is the title of this refers to a need, uh, to, uh, that, that this, that this plan is necessary to effectuate the city's adopted two thousand nineteen third-round housing element. The fact of the matter is, is that if this overlay zone produces not even one affordable unit, the plan will be satisfied, because you have no obligation whatsoever, do you?
No, that is not accurate. The plan is satisfied through effectuation of it, which is adoption of ordinances. What you're confusing is a housing element and fair share plan versus an obligation. Your point is the city does not have an affordable housing obligation, therefore it should not adopt this ordinance. I think that is understood by myself and perhaps others on the phone. The purpose of the ordinance is not intended to address an affordable housing obligation. The purpose of the ordinance is to implement the housing element and fair share plan, which speaks of adopting ordinances to create affordable housing, because that is a goal of the city. These are two different things. A municipality is not required or not permitted to only adopt such ordinances if it has an affordable housing obligation. The city is permitted, just like every other municipality in the state, they are permitted to adopt affordable housing ordinances that go above and beyond their obligation. That is what is happening here.
Fuck, I just wanna make it clear that Asbury Park is, is raising the allowable heights on high-rises in this zone by three stories i- in order to accomplish, not to accomplish a state-mandated constitutional requirement, but in order to accomplish something that Asbury Park itself, exclusively itself, seems to be appropriate. Isn't that accurate?
Yeah.
And, and what type of analysis was done to determine what the impact would be in the overlay zone of raising the permitted height from five stories, three more stories to eight stories? Can you tell me what kind of professional assessment was undertaken before either the planning board or now this council? Because I'm sure there's gonna be colloquy. I expect active colloquy by the council members on something of this magnitude, and I'll be listening. So, what type of evidence in the record are you going to be relying on to determine that it is fair, reasonable, and appropriate, from a planning perspective, to, uh, to, uh, allow for three extra stories in the zone? What are you relying on?
The city, through the preparation of its housing element and fair share plan, and through its preparation of this ordinance with its Affordable Housing Committee, as well as the Affordable Housing Coalition, worked together to identify locations in the city that were appropriate for accommodated increased height and density. This area along Deer Lake Drive was one of them. And there was no, uh, shadow study or anything along those lines, if that's what you're suggesting. That such studies, uh, were not done. Instead, the city conducted, uh, uh, an analysis through these documents and through these procedures that I just described, to identify locations that it felt were appropriate for increased height and density based upon, uh, a variety of factors. But there is no, uh, if you're asking for submission of a supplemental study, there is not one that I can provide to you.
Well, I didn't think you could. I'm not asking, though, for a supplemental study. You referred to documents, and on the record tonight, I would like you to identify one document that explains the need for, or the justification for increasing the height from five stories to eight stories. Who are the-
I did not ro- I did not cite, I, I did not cite documents. I cited the housing element and the fair share plan, and the procedure for developing this ordinance. I did not cite specific documents, aside from those.
I'll let the record speak for itself, you're wrong, you did, but it doesn't matter. So, tell me what other evidence, if it wasn't documents, then the only thing that could have been more witnesses. So, identify the witnesses before the planning board, or before this council tonight, that provided justification for raising the height level from five stories to eight stories. In the record, where is it, and what's the testimony? Would you identify it?
Mr. Lieberman, McManus has answered your question.
No, she hasn't, if you're not the witness attorney, I'm asking the witnesses, this is a public hearing, and even though it is poorly designed, it's an illegal meeting, I still have the right to cross-examine, unless you want that to be yet an additional basis for appeal. So, ma'am, I'm asking you once again, in the record, you've already told me there are no documents, you've already told me there's no supplemental studies. What witness testimony did you in fact rely upon, or did the planning board rely upon, in determining that it was appropriate to raise the height from five stories to eight stories? Can you identify one witness?
The witnesses that have discussed this at various public meetings are myself and other city staff members, uh, such as those on the phone.
I see, and, and what, and, and what witness in particular stated that this area would benefit from a three-story height, and what was the factual predicate for that testimony? Can you recall?
The testimony came from myself, and perhaps supplemented by other city staff members, but I don't wanna cite anybody in particular on certain dates, because I don't have that at the front of my mind. Uh, I provided testimony-
Well, this is a meeting where this ordinance is being considered. If you're not doing it tonight, and you weren't prepared to do it tonight, when did you think you were gonna do it?
She does not, this is Alonso, I'm the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. The questioning is not pertinent to the, the affordable housing aspect of this ordinance.
No, it's not, except for it's an affordable housing plan, and it's an affordable housing ordinance, and everything about it is strictly and solely affordable housing. So, how you can say that is absolutely beyond any question. Let me ask you another question now for you. The, um, maybe you can answer this one. The ordinance allows for, does require certain parking requirements for certain types of housing in the zone, isn't that correct? In other words, if you look at the draft ordinance, which will be adopted in just a few minutes, if you look at-
Yes, I know what provision you're referring to, I know what you're provision, what provision you're referring to.
I appreciate it, but we're gonna get it on the record, we need a record for this. So, particularly, um, section E, uh, excuse me, E one provides the following. And then I have a question, so listen carefully if you will. It says, "Parking shall be provided pursuant to section thirty dash fifty-nine point five, with the exception that parking shall not be required for low, moderate, and income U-Rich." Did I read it correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are you familiar with what section thirty hyphen fifty-nine point five provides?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you tell me?
Hold on one moment, I'll just, uh, I'll cite it for you.
Are you looking it up now, or do you know?
She can look it up, she, there's nothing that says, but she has to have it by memory, she can look it up.
I really appreciate your interference, let the witness testify.
I am a wit, I am, Ms. Alonso, I'm the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. There is no witness in a, in a council hearing. This is not a planning board hearing.
I have a question, ma'am, so thank you. Ma'am, do you know the answer to this question? What does thirty hyphen fifty-nine point five provide?
It provides, um, my recollection is it provides the parking standards for, uh, for off-street parking requirements based on various uses in the city.
Okay, so, there are certain uses in this zone that will require off-site parking. My question is, in this zone, what are those uses? What uses in this zone will require off-site parking, please identify them?
For the overlay zone specifically, it requires parking for market-rate residential units.
Okay, now, what is the rationale? Would you explain to me what the rationale is? Or said in a way that lawyers ask, what is the rational basis for distinct, for attributing a parking requirement to market-rate houses, but not attributing a pocket, parking requirement for low, moderate, and middle-income houses? I would like you to give, for the record, the rational basis for that, go ahead, ma'am.
It provides an additional form of compensatory benefit for the creation of affordable housing.
Is there a difference between the kinds of cars that people in market-rate housing drive, as opposed to the cars that people in low, moderate, or mid-income, middle-income units drive? Is there a difference in cars?
I have not conducted a survey to evaluate the, quote, "kind of cars" driven by people in market-rate housing versus low, moderate, and middle-income housing.
Would you agree with me that owners of market-rate housing have the same parking demands and parking needs as owners of middle, um, excuse me, let, let me get the term, as low, moderate, and middle-income units? Would you agree that the parking needs and demands are identical?
No.
Okay, would you cite the study that was done in Asbury Park? Or, if you want, give me a, uh, industry-wide study that supports that opinion?
Mr. Fredo, Mr. Fredo, is this, is this relevant to, to the ordinance?
It certainly is, and if you don't understand that, that's probably more frightening than anything. I have a right to determine on the record why various parts of this ordinance are here, and what the rational basis is. Because if there isn't a rational basis, it's subject to being reversed in the superior courts. This is a hearing, it's a very poor hearing, it isn't being up, designed, or conducted properly at all, and your continued interference actually makes it even worse. So, I ask the witness once again, are the needs, are the parking needs of people who have market-share housing the same as the parking-
Mr. Lieberman, one moment, I wanna clarify something for you. This is not a, this is not a hearing before a planning or zoning board in a quasi-judicial body. It's a public hearing on an ordinance. You keep referring to Ms. McManus as the witness. She's not a witness who's testifying under oath. She's a representative of the governing body, a professional who is involved in preparing these ordinances. But I just want to clarify that we are not in that kind of a setting.
I understand that, you know, sir, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've been in these settings many times, just as you have. I have a public right to ask the members of the council and their retained representatives questions at a public hearing when an ordinance is being adopted. I have a right to do that in order to establish and determine the basis for the action that is being undertaken. I am just trying to do so. I must say that unfortunately, the responses have been very minimal, and I know you'll challenge me on that, but the record will speak for itself. I want to understand the parking component and what the rational basis is. Is the witness able to-
Ms. McManus answered your question.
No, she hasn't, as a matter of fact, so I'll ask it again. Is there, and from your basis, do you have an understanding as to whether or not those who live in market-rate housings, housing have different parking needs than those who live in low, moderate, and middle-income houses? Do you have an understanding as to whether they do?
There's been no study conducted in Asbury Park. I cannot tell you a specific study. However, there's a general understanding that households with low or moderate income have less discretionary funds. Those discretionary, those lower discretionary funds are likely to result in, uh, uh, fewer, uh, uh, fewer vehicles per household, where they may not be deemed essential. Uh, such, for that reason, you see a greater percentage of low and moderate-income households using public transportation, that's evidence of that fact. Uh, I cannot cite a specific site. And so, the, the reduced parking requirement is based, is based upon the desire to grant an additional compensatory benefit in order to incentivize the creation of affordable housing. The other thing that should be noted is the ordinance does not prohibit parking being provided for low and moderate-income households. But it does not require it, and I wanna be clear about that distinction. So, yes, it does not require that parking be provided for the affordable units, but if the developer deems a demand for it, if through the planning board process, uh, the planning board is able to seek addition, or zoning board, if that's- the planning board is able to seek additional, or zoning board, if that's the case, is able to seek additional parking, that's certainly permitted without violating the ordinance.
Right, and your, your expectation would be that if the developer were to come about, even though the ordinance doesn't require it, you would expect the developer would provide off-site parking? That would be your anticipation, is that correct?
No, that's not what I, that's not what I said. I simply wanted to make clear that the, that the parking provision regarding affordable households is a voluntary measure, not a requirement imposed upon the developer.
Um, let me see if, if I have any other questions. The overlay, what kind of parking inventory or parking assessment was undertaken in the overlay zone before this provision of the overlay ordinance was drafted?
There's no, there's no parking study for this.
Have you, are you
Instead, a developer, for any site plan application, will be required to conduct the typical traffic and parking assessments as part of their site plan application.
Well, you know that if there's, if, if, if no off-site parking is required, there wouldn't be a need for them to conduct that at all. Where, where would that
Well, there will be parking required for the market rate units. Let's not forget that.
Yeah, we're just talking about the affordable units that do not have the parking
I understand, that for which no parking is required whatsoever. That's all I've been talking about as well. We're, we're talking about the same thing. I can assure you, we're talking about the same thing. All right. I, I don't have any other questions. This is a horrible, by the way, let me ask you another question. Has the, did, did the, did the planning board consider having an overlay zone that simply went from Main Street to the ocean? So that this obligation and these opportunities for affordable housing could be evenly distributed from Main Street to the ocean? Was that something that was ever considered by the board?
I certainly did not make that recommendation.
You didn't make the recommendation. Instead, can you tell me why you didn't? Don't you think it would be fair if people who need affordable housing and people who would benefit from that could, rather than being clustered in a certain area of town, could be freely distributed throughout the town rather, rather than having a ghetto effect from clustering? Don't you think that would be reasonable and appropriate?
Well, first, I, I want to vehemently disagree with your characterization. I think you just said a ghetto effect, something along those lines. So I just vehemently disagree with that characterization, that that is, that is something that would even occur through overlay zoning or, or even zoning of a particular site. Even if it was 100% affordable housing, I don't believe that it is fair or appropriate to label that as a quote ghetto. I find that an offensive term to be used in this context, for one.
Do you understand what I mean by ghetto? I mean a cluster. I don't mean an economic ghetto.
I don't know what you mean by ghetto in this context.
Okay, well, I just told you. Go ahead.
Furthermore, if you look at the, at the council's agenda in all of these ordinances in context, what you find is that there is not a clustering of these, these new zoning amendments to any particular area of the city. And in fact, they take place in several areas of the city. In addition to that, the mandatory set-aside ordinance applies citywide so that if opportunities arise, perhaps in areas not subject to this overlay zone or other ordinances between Main Street and the waterfront, that affordable housing opportunities may be captured at that point, should the council, the planning board, or the zoning board grant the approvals that would trigger the mandatory set-aside ordinance. So in no way, shape, or form has only one area of the city been targeted through this implementation of the housing plan. And in fact, all of the city has some element of an affordable housing requirement imposed upon it as a result of this body of ordinances, should the council decide to adopt them.
Well, that's not true because the ocean doesn't. It's not true at all. The most valuable part of Asbury Park has none of them.
The mandatory set-aside ordinance would apply should, should the waterfront redevelopment seek to undo their, seek to, seek a redevelopment plan amendment and undo their redevelopment agreements.
Right. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to Gregory. Gregory, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments about the ordinance being presented.
Okay, again, Gregory Schneck, 318 Heath Avenue. Yeah, I can understand, it, the, I can understand Ordinance 2020-9 because the goal was to create inclusive housing within Asbury Park and across Asbury. What I don't understand is what's, what is the need? I don't understand the purpose of 20, 2020-11 to single out Deal Lake Road and designate it as the low to moderate income, incomes zone. I mean, what's the point of having to, why do you have to do that at all? Why isn't Deal Lake Road subject to the same clause of 2020-9? Doesn't that just do the same thing? What's the, why, why do you need to?
Is your question why to? So I'm sorry, this is Beth McManus. I don't mean to cut you off, but I think your question is, if we have the mandatory set-aside ordinance, why do additional zoning changes?
Yeah, why do you need 2020 at all? Yeah, why do you need 2020-11 at all?
So the mandatory set-aside ordinance is only applicable where a developer is successful in getting a change to the zoning. So that means, let's say, somebody is seeking a rezoning or a use variance. A use variance is perhaps the most straightforward example. So the mandatory set-aside ordinance is only going to be applicable where the developer can meet the various legal proofs to receive that use variance, whether it's a, a, a new use that's not otherwise permitted, in this case, it would have to be multifamily housing, or perhaps a use variance for building height. And there are specific proofs that, that the developer must meet based on perhaps what purposes of municipal land use law are supported or what type of impact there is on a public good or zone plan. There are specific proofs that must be met. And those are very, they're intentionally, by the state, very difficult to meet. And so what we, what we see here is a multiple-pronged approach where should, where the city has decided to move forward with the mandatory set-aside ordinance to capture any affordable housing opportunities, should a developer be able to meet those proofs or otherwise receive the rezoning or the redevelopment plan amendment, which are, which are tall orders, so to speak, as well, as well as the use variance proofs being difficult. But the purpose of the inclusionary zoning ordinance is, is to actually create an incentive for the creation of affordable housing by creating new zoning that a developer can utilize to essentially create a project that's financially feasible and able to provide a 20% affordable housing set-aside. And that's very different than the mandatory set-aside ordinance. That doesn't, that doesn't actually create an incentive for production of affordable housing. It just simply captures an opportunity where, where it might arise. But the Deal Lake ordinance, this R3 ordinance as well, some of the others that are on the council's agenda for this evening, they specifically are intended to incentivize the creation of affordable housing and to eliminate the need from, need of the developer to having to meet those, say, use variance proof.
Okay, so, so it sounds like 2020-11 is intended to incentivize and promote developers to build eight-story buildings.
Provided they do so, yeah, provided they do so within the ordinance and, and most importantly for this ordinance is provided they, they do 20% of those units as affordable housing.
So it sounds like Mr. McNolly is correct in what he's saying, that this whole thing is, is designed for the developers.
No, that's not correct. You know, there are a lot of folks that thinks, that thinks that is true across the state, but it's, it's not. Certainly, there are developers that want to provide affordable housing and that are looking for these types of ordinances. And I mean, that is 100% true. But it's the, creating affordable housing through inclusionary zoning is the most efficient way, efficient from a cost-effective standpoint of way of providing affordable housing. It is the only way for a municipality to rely upon the private market as opposed to its own money or perhaps state or federal government's money to create affordable housing. And so the use of inclusionary housing, it does leverage what developers want, they want to build, but it does so in a way that helps the city address its own goals. And here, in this ordinance, as well as the other ordinances that we're going to talk about, are not, were not prompted by a developer coming forward to the city. This is not a result of, hey, so-and-so reached out to the city and they want to, you know, make X, Y, Z change, so let's write an ordinance to facilitate that. That's very much not what this is. Instead, this was a, now a multi-year process of city staff, volunteers, professionals looking at those areas of the city whose zoning should be amended in order to, at a minimum, achieve affordable housing goals. Some of the other, and there are other opportunities to meet other goals that are more applicable to other ordinances as well. But this is a, this is a way to, from a cost-effective standpoint, for the city to promote the creation of affordable housing and to essentially rely upon the private market to do so. It is, it is one of the most, one of perhaps the, I don't know, popular or widely-used way of creating affordable housing across the state.
Okay, well, it doesn't sound like Asbury Park is, is coming up short on meeting its goals for affordable housing.
Right, right. And I've discussed this is not about meeting a constitutional obligation.
Here, I, I still don't see the need for, for Ordinance 2020-11. It should just, it, it should be subject to 2020-9, just like the rest of Asbury Park. And unfortunately for the people who live along Deal Lake Road, this significantly impacts the value of their homes, the sheer designation of that area as the low to moderate income zone. And, and again, going back to the whole point, we're talking inclusionary housing. It, it, what we have here is an oxymoron where we're talking, we say, we say we want inclusionary housing, oh, but not on the waterfront, where, you know, where the rich developers are. We're going to make an inclusionary housing zone over there. It's an oxymoron. It makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, I, I can go along with 2020-9, 2020-11. It, 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 it's, it seriously impacts and is hurtful to people along Deal Lake Road. It's clearly in favor of, of the developers and, and it, it, it's a travesty that, that, that it's just being pushed through. I mean, you, you sent out certified letters to the public so that we could participate in this forum and to express our objections. I have not heard one single person say, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. Every single person who has stepped up has expressed concern, asked for this to be postponed, or, or, or objects to, to, to these ordinances. And, and yet, you approve them anyway. So what's the point? Why, why invite us to this forum if, 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 if you're going to just completely ignore the objections anyway and just approve everything? I mean, it's not even debatable. There wasn't one person who stepped up and said, I think it's a good idea. Not one. Every single person from the public who was, who, who was invited to, to this forum and participated said, please stop, or please pause. And then you went ahead and approved everything. What's the point?
Thank you for your comment.
Gregory, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you. We're now moving on to Mr. McNolly. Mr. McNolly, please keep your questions or comments regarding the ordinance being presented only.
Oh, yeah, hi. I want to thank, I was able to listen and get a little snack because I guess this may go to like 3:00 in the morning. But the thing is, I, I start to notice slowly, you know, all the concerned citizens that live in the area, please don't construe us that we don't want or welcome or love all income levels, all people into the neighborhood. But you know what? What would happen if you built a lot of three-story, multiple use, meaning market? And why? You, you know what this comes down to? You need eight stories because what you lose in the set-aside or the, you have to make up in the market value. And that's what this is about. It's an accounting tool. And you're trying to send it off to the public as like, we're stupid, we don't understand. This is not about caring for inclusion and people who need a place. And by the way, look at all the other projects you've done that were supposed to be for low and moderate. I mean, it's made county headlines. It, it's not working. All the people are thrown out of Asbury.
Mr. McNolly, would you please keep your comments to the ordinance?
You know, Mr. Raffetto, Mr. Raffetto, Mr. Raffetto, you just keep interrupting everybody. It's hard to believe that you're the city attorney representing, we pay your salary, and yet, you, you only strike alliances with developers and with the mayor and council and the planning and the zoning board. You know what? We pay you still.
It has nothing to do with the ordinance and questions.
It's got everything to do with it. Look at your pay.
Please keep your comments to the ordinance and questions.
You know, you know what, Mr. Raffetto? You know what, Mr. Raffetto? Look at your paycheck one, look at your paycheck one time, and look at the, the funds for legal fees.
Mayor, I think you need to move to the next
Mr. McNolly, would you please ask a question about the personal attack?
It's not a personal attack.
Yes, it is, sir.
No, you know what, mayor? Come on now. You were being so nice to me tonight. It's not a personal attack. I'm talking to Mr. Raffetto as a city attorney. I don't even know him personally.
It, it, it's your not
It's not a personal attack. If anything, all right, I'll tell you what. I'm going to make it a personal attack against Ansel Grimarin, of which he's a partner. Now, is that personal to Mr. Raffetto?
The ordinance has nothing to do with I'm going to rule you out of order and cut you off because this is not a time to make attacks. This is a time to ask questions. If you have a question, and if you stray from the question whatsoever, I'm going to say, somebody mute him. Please ask your questions, no more attacks, please, sir.
Okay, so I'm very, very interested in Mr. Lieberman's line of questioning relative to, I think the thing that's most problematic here, obviously, is the parking. Obviously, is the impact. But, but this, this thing about the increased height and density, it, it just, I, I mean, can I, is this the planner? Are you the planner? The person who's
I'm the city, this is Beth McManus. I'm the city's affordable housing consultant. I am a planner, though.
Okay, okay. You're like a certified city planner. And you, and you were, and you were hired, I guess, by the city?
Yes, I work for the city.
Okay. And, and to do what?
To, I mean, it
I mean, are you representing the Are you representing the taxpayers or the city? And, you know, I can't even say it. They'll say, I'm attacking you. Let me ask you anyway. Are you representing the developers?
She's a professional, Mr. McNolly, who works for the city of Asbury Park.
You know, Mr. Raffetto, all right, let me ask you a question. What is your purpose? In other words, are, are you retained to try and get this passed even though it seems like In other words, are you retained to try and get this passed even though it seems like 16,000 people in Asbury don't want it? But you're retained to like push it down on... I don't want to say that because then they'll say, I'm not being nice to you. Are you retained?
Mr. McNolley, again, I'm going to stop you with personal attacks.
It's not per... Oh, my God, Mayor.
Yes, yes. She was asked. She gave her credentials numerous times. Everybody's accepted her as a professional in her field.
I'm not saying she's not professional.
Sorry about the Asbury Park.
Oh, my God. Mayor, I'm not saying she's not professional. Sounds like a very professional, nice person. I'm just trying to see what she was paid to do.
She was hired by the city to give us guidance.
Okay, okay. But when asked... When asked, Mayor, when asked, the most important...
I'm going to bang the gavel and say, it's over.
No, don't do that, Mayor. Don't do that. Go ahead, I'm listening.
Ask the question.
Okay. Why when asked?
What's your question?
Okay. Why when asked the most important question of the night about...
Okay.
About increasing the height from five to eight stories? Why can you rationalize or professionally say, I base this on facts or studies? You basically admitted that it's extemporaneous. And I don't know much about law, but I don't think you can pass an ordinance based on no studies. That's not going to wind up in an appeal court. But then I'm asking, why? Why would you do this knowing that it could go to appeal only if you believe that the city residents of Asbury are not cohesive enough, don't have the money that you have to put up a fight? Because that's why everything gets passed.
Mr. McNolley...
That's my question. So how did you?
Ask the question.
How did you? How do you?
And Ms. McNabb, if you want to answer, fine. If you don't want to answer, fine. Because, again, Mr. McNolley keeps us strained and makes this a personal attack.
Let me just reiterate the answer I had provided before. So while there was no supplemental studies provided to Planning Board or Council that discussed the increase in height as well as the other changes in this area of the city along Deal Lake Drive, the area was selected because it was identified as an area of the city that could accommodate the increased density and therefore the affordable housing set-aside of 20% that was going to be applied. It was identified because of the presence of taller buildings in the surrounding area and the location which folks felt was not out of... Not out of character with the surrounding buildings and the development intensity currently permitted. They felt that the increase in height was appropriate in this location. So that's just a... I'll just reiterate that from before.
Thank you. Question asked, question answered, next question, please.
Okay. We are moving on to 7726. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments or questions only about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Hi, this is Eileen Lapenny, 301 Aethas. I spoke earlier. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, okay. One question. As I said, the reason why I came into this meeting today is because I received a certified letter, not really understanding the legal jargon. And that's the reason why I really wanted to clarify what was going on. So my understanding is when you receive something like this, it's a public forum for opinion. And then from the opinion, then we're going to vote on it. But it seems to me that it was already decided. So you're notifying us about this meeting to speak about the different changes that we're going to have with the zoning, but yet it was already decided. So I don't understand. It was almost like, you know, we... I feel as if we should have been notified before the decision was made. Like, that certified letter should have come in February of 2019 and throughout. And I was not following along. You know, that's my own fault. However, you know, now that it's done, we got the certified letter. So I guess my question is, I'm not that familiar with government proceedings or town proceedings. And I received a certified letter after it was a done deal. So is that the way it's conducted? I mean, I'm just trying to educate myself here. I'm looking a little...
I'll step in and answer that question. This is Fred Fredo, the city attorney. Absolutely not.
Thank you.
The council will have an opportunity, once the public hearing is closed, to consider the ordinance and make a final determination, considering all the comments that were made.
Okay. Well, thank you. I really feel good about that because after four and a half hours, you know, it felt like it would be fruitless for me to, you know, participate and listen and hear both sides and understand exactly what's happening. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
I thank you. And there's been other ordinances throughout the years where we have moved it to the second hearing and then people raise their concerns and they have not been passed. So it's the same way here. Nothing is a done deal until we hear everything. And I thank you for being on for four and a half hours.
We are now moving on to 6656. Please state your name and address for the record. And your comments and questions can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Yeah, how you doing? Matthew Cresio?
I'm sorry, sir. Can you repeat your name and address?
Matthew Cresio, 1616 Park Avenue.
Okay, Matthew. Go ahead with your question.
Yeah, how you doing, John? Hopefully, everybody in the city council, you're doing a great job as far as fire, police, EMS. You're doing a great job protecting the citizens.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. From Amy to every board member. The only question I have is, though, with the uprise, you know, they want to give the affordable housing. Will they be allowed abatement? That's all, pretty simple.
There are no abatements written into the code. If there, you know, any developer that's eligible for a tax abate may request one. There's simply nothing the city can do about requests like that. But this ordinance does nothing to facilitate them getting approval for it or even facilitate them or suggesting that they ask should be made.
So they can ask for it, but it's up to the city council, even if John's not there, Amy or Coach isn't there?
It is always up to the... It is always up to the city council. This ordinance is entirely silent on that issue.
Okay. That's all, pretty simple.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, we're now calling on Mr. McNolley. Please keep your comments about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing.
Yeah, hi. Ernest McNolley, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I just think it's important to point out that... That I believe there's conflicts in this decision. And I don't know if this is the place to mention it, but I just listened to a Mr. Cresio talk about other things other than what this meeting's about. So why don't I say, there are actually board members or council members that have investor properties right on Deal Lake Drive, and they're pretty silent on this. I don't get it.
Do you have a question for the ordinance? Do you have a question for the ordinance?
Yeah, that's my question. Why are there council members who are right in this zone as condo investors who are going to vote on this? I mean, isn't that a conflict?
Well, couldn't I turn that around on you? Why are you a condo owner, like, making these comments? I don't think that's relevant. And again...
Oh, come on, Mayor. Hey, Mayor, you know what? Why are you defending Deputy Mayor Quinn being an investor on Deal Lake Drive and sounding like she's more for the developer than for us?
Mr. McNolley?
Why? I know you're going to hang up on me. Go ahead.
No, I'm going to rule you out of order unless you please have a question about the ordinance specifically, not as far as conjecture and everything else. I mean, so...
What conjecture?
Your assumption. So...
All right. Here's my question. About these increased height, what I'm asking you is very important. Don't you feel that some of the people who are about to vote on this are too close to it in terms of investment to be voted?
That's not a question about the ordinance.
I'm asking you, you're going to be voting on this right now.
Ordinance, sir. If you have a question, I'm going to rule you out of order. And as much as like, I'm going to... Next time, I'm going to tell Mr. Manzella, who's controlling this, not to let you back in because this is the second time I said, if you have questions, we'll entertain them. But then you come back in, you sneak in. If it was a regular council meeting, I would have had you removed by now.
I can't believe the way you talk to me. You know, there's a lot of people listening there. You're running out of... You know, you're running out of insulting people. You know that, right?
And you just told me like I was the nicest guy I ever talked to, so...
Well, that was before. I just changed my mind.
Okay, well, thank you.
You were being a little nicer before, unlike you usually are. And now you're back to being the way you usually are.
Okay.
So, look...
Next person, please. No, you're done, sir. Next person, please.
Okay. Good. Seeing no more members of the public, motion to close the public hearing on 2020-11. Do I have a second?
Second. Yvonne Clayton.
All in favor?
All right.
I'm not... Everyone's here... I'm not hearing anyone.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm on...
Okay, there we go.
I was unmute. I'm sorry, Melody, I was mute.
That's okay. That's okay. All right. We're now on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Roll call for what? Timeout.
That was to close the public hearing, right, Melody?
Yes, we closed the public hearing.
All right. Now, do we have a motion to move the ordinance forward for adoption?
Yes, Council, Kendall.
Councilmember Kendall with the move. And do I have a second?
Amy Quinn with the second.
Okay. We're now on to the roll call.
Well, before the roll call, does anyone want to say anything?
No. Roll call, I'm sorry.
Then move forward to the roll.
Any comments? Okay. Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Chapman? Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah. Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Clayton? You want me to come back to Councilmember Clayton?
Please.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Maybe we lost her, Fred, as the past...
Yeah, Melody, I don't see her. I don't see her on the call.
Okay.
I dropped off.
Okay. All right. 2020-11 has been adopted. We're now on to the public hearing for 20... I'm sorry? Yvonne's trying to get back on. She got dropped off. Okay.
All right. We can move forward and when she gets on, she'll be on.
Okay. We're on to the public hearing for 2020-12, an ordinance amending the land development regulations of the City of Asbury Park. Article 8 redevelopment plan, section 30-110.2 Main Street redevelopment plan consistent with and designed to effectuate the city's adopted 2019 third-round housing element and fair share plan. Beth, can you provide us with a brief overview of the ordinance?
Sure. This is Beth McNabb. This is an ordinance which amends the Main Street redevelopment plan, which, as named, is along the Main Street corridor, generally speaking. It... The Main Street redevelopment plan is broken up into a number of... I believe they're referred to as zones in there. And so what this does is it increases the building height by one story in every one of these zones from, say, three to four stories or four to five stories, except for the area referred to as the Civic Core/South Gateway. That is actually the municipal building area, the lot and the municipal complex area. That building height is at eight stories. That is unchanged. The ordinance changes go on to not only increase the building height by one story, with that one exception, but it also eliminates the parking requirement for low- and moderate-income housing. And it also requires an affordable housing set-aside of 20%, except for the municipal building lot that... Excuse me, let me be more specific. The Civic Core/South Gateway area. And that area is required to provide a 25% set-aside of affordable housing units. And so this is a place, because it's owned by the city, we're able to generate a higher affordable housing set-aside of 25%. In addition, I should also state that we also have an incentive here for middle-income housing like we do in the other zones. And so that's a quick summary of the Main Street changes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2020-12?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, I... Yeah, okay.
No. Do not take the vote, please. I'm going to ask Fred if there's some way we can take a five-minute recess to see if we should continue tonight or shut it down and have another meeting, not wait a month and within the next week or so, just because a lot of public probably wants to be heard. I don't want to keep them up to 3:00 in the morning. So I do not want this to be heard on appeal because we did that. So if we take a five-minute recess and... Fred, you can weigh in now.
I think what... Fred, I think what John's asking is can we... Can we... I know we've moved forward with a number of the ordinances tonight. Can we move forward with public comment and discussion with the rest of the ordinances after tonight? You know, within, hopefully, a short period of time because within a short period... You know, within a week or two, have another discussion and public comment on the rest of the ordinances.
Listen, I'm falling asleep, guys.
Fred?
I got a four-yard... That's going to be up at 5:30 people.
So I don't know where Fred went, but I did...
I apologize. I'm here. I was... Are you there? Okay. I'm here. So absolutely, you can adjourn the meeting, but we would need to set a date specific before you adjourn the meeting for when the remaining ordinances will be considered and the rest of the agenda will be moved to that council meeting. And we can notice it accordingly and have it done within the next two weeks, whenever the council has availability. But we have to come to a conclusion tonight before you close the meeting so that we have a date certain. Otherwise, you need to do re-noticing.
Okay. Do it a week from tonight. Does everybody have to be re-noticed as far as the registered left?
No.
Okay. Then do it a week from tonight. Same, move it up to 6:00, since nobody has to be re-noticed. And we'll start a week from tonight at 6:00, if that's good with everybody.
So it's April 29th, Mayor? That's April 29th?
Yeah.
Can you just do me one favor and say 6:30, just to make sure I get out of... I'm out of work and I'm like fully focused on this? If we could just start the meeting at 6:30, that would make my life slightly easier.
Okay. If it's 6:30, then keep it at 7:00, so nobody says we're changing the time. 6:30, 7:00, I don't care. By 7:00 to 12:00, the next meeting, we should be done with the next four, hopefully.
All right. And I have a question. I'm sorry I missed the vote. Can I vote?
At this point, Yvonne, respectfully, the ordinance has passed, even though you weren't there at the time.
All right.
You can't vote, but you voice your opinion off the record.
That's fine.
All right. Okay.
So what I would suggest is since you have established a date, and that would be Wednesday, April 29, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., that before you adjourn tonight's meeting, that there be a motion to table the remaining ordinances, which would be ordinances 2020-12 through 2020-16, to the special meeting to be held on April 29, 2020, at 7:00 p.m.
Sounds good, Fred.
Okay. No, wait a second. You need to take a motion and a second and a vote.
Right.
No. Wait a second, Fred. I just threw a date out off the top of my head just to make sure Beth is available before we... before we get to it.
Oh, Mayor, I'm available. I would've spoken up if I wasn't. I'm, I'm available that night.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Uh, wait, wait a second. Uh, that's, I knew there was something else going on the twenty ninth. That's the same night as the Board of Education adopted their budget, which is gonna be, I know I'm gonna be on that call, so let's change it to either the twenty-eighth or the thirtieth.
Uh, Thursday's better for me. Yeah, Thursday, Thursday was better for me from the get.
And, and can we do that, and can we, and can we start that at six o'clock, then?
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Perfect. Great.
Okay, so Fred, read all the legal stuff and all the public. I appreciate you being on. We take your comments at heart, and we'll continue this down the road, but thank you all.
So, so there needs to be a motion, right, Fred? Do you need to do a motion?
Based upon, based upon the discussion of the mayor and council, to the effect that you've been hour, gi- given the lateness of the hour, um, they feel it best to adjourn tonight's meeting and to carry the remaining agenda items to a special meeting that will be noticed, uh, accordingly, under the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. That meeting will be held on Thursday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty, starting at six o'clock PM. It will also be held virtually, and the dial-in instructions will be posted on the city's website prior to that meeting. And we would need to have a motion and a second and a vote to table the remaining agenda items, which include ordinances number twenty twenty dash twelve, twenty twenty dash thirteen, twenty twenty dash fourteen, twenty twenty dash fifteen, and twenty twenty dash sixteen, to the special meeting to be held on Thursday, April thirtieth, at six o'clock PM.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I have a question. Uh, okay, motion. Kendall, motion.
Do I have a second? Second, second.
More.
Second for more, okay. Um, you're not gonna take the roll call.
Jesse had a question.
I just had a question.
Okay.
Is this closed now to the public? Can they hear me?
No.
Oh, okay, I'll save my comments.
Okay. Councilmember Chapman? Yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, so that adjourns the remaining agenda items to the special meeting to be held on Thursday, April thirtieth, at six o'clock PM, and now you would just need to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Move it.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Bye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.